Good evening. I wanted to welcome, welcome you to the Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, regular meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Wermick.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Rotman.
Here.
Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, the agenda was published and available online for public access, as well as posted at the City Hall exterior bulletin board by nine o'clock PM on Thursday, December 5th, 2024, in accordance with our policies and procedures.
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Oh, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 At this time, this is, I'm opening the public comment period. The time is set aside for members of the public to address the planning commission on consent calendar and other agenda items and items of general interest within our jurisdiction. Please note that we can't take action on something that isn't on the posted agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes. Testimony for public hearings may be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing. Members of the public who would like to comment on the consent calendar or new business items should speak at this time. Just to note that item two, which is the Chick-fil-A and I, sorry, item, item two, two A and B are both public hearing items and you can speak at that time. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak?
We have members who have signed up to speak during public hearing items. We do have a few members online. If you would like to speak now during public comment on non-public hearing items, please raise your hand. Also, if you are online and wish to speak at the time of the public hearing, I will call on you again and ask that you raise your hand so I can allow you to speak. There are no speakers online, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We don't have a consent calendar item, so we're going to item two, I'm closing the public hearing. Item two, which is a public hearing item. The first item before us is a request by Stacy Nelson owner for the approval of a conditional use permit to establish an existing single-family dwelling as an accessory dwelling unit to allow a new primary dwelling unit to be constructed on roughly, on a roughly 23,533 square foot parcel located at 2772 Anza Trail, Zone R1B. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, planning commissioners. This project is somewhat unusual for a conditional use permit for your consideration in that there really is no construction associated with this one at this time. The conditional use permit that is the section of the ordinance which this is being referenced is shown here, that any ADU that is, that does not conform, excuse me, to the objective criteria of our ADU ordinance may be allowed by the approval of a conditional use permit. And that is the subject of this particular project. So, the project has a, is an existing lot in the Araby tract. It's a legal non-conforming lot. It's a very long, narrow lot, as you can see in this particular image. The top part of this image gives you some, some understanding of the existing conditions on the lot. So, what is based in, by the way, on that image that you're seeing, the north is to the right. So, at the front of the lot is an existing single-family dwelling, which is the primary dwelling unit on this parcel. It's about 1,500 square feet in size. Right behind it is an existing accessory dwelling unit that's around 580 square feet in size. And then there's a small shed that is just in the upper left corner, which is the south side of the front of the lot. The applicant desires to build a home on the rear portion of the lot. And that new home is not the subject of tonight's CUP consideration because this is a non-hillside, non-major thoroughfare area. When they get ready to actually build the house that they desire to put on this lot, it will go through the building permit process as any other house on a flat lot in the city would go. So, with that desire to build a new primary dwelling, what they are requesting here tonight on the CUP is that the existing dwelling, which is about 1,500 square feet, would become the accessory dwelling unit for this parcel. So, then the question is asked, well, what do we do with the existing ADU? In this kind of configuration where they're both going to be detached units, you can have one ADU, but you can't have two. There are some instances in the zoning code under the ADU ordinance where two ADUs are possible. They refer to it as a J-ADU and an ADU. But this particular project and these existing structures do not qualify in that way. And so, the existing ADU, which is that smaller square building in the rooftop that you see in the top image, is going to become basically a poolhouse or a guest unit. And then the primary dwelling is going to become, I'm sorry, beg your pardon, the accessory dwelling unit, once the new home is built, will become the ADU. And so, that's what you see in the white portion of that, the lower part of the image. So, the findings for the CUP, for any CUP, are in zoning code section 9402. And we have made those findings affirmatively in the staff report, and I can go over any of those that you would like to discuss. We find with review of the project against the CUP findings that the finding, all the findings can be met, which would allow approval of the project. We also are suggesting that this project is qualified for a categorical exemption under SEQA. I want to just point out on this slide that there are a couple of conditions of approval that are, that are important to make this approval work properly between building and planning. The first one that you see there is that we must remove the kitchen from the existing ADU, so it will become a poolhouse or a guest bedroom or something like that, but it will no longer be an ADU. And the second condition of approval is that this action that you're considering tonight, if it were, if it is approved, does not go into effect until the certificate of occupancy for the new primary dwelling is issued. So, this will be a, if you do approve this tonight, it will be an approval for the CUP, but it cannot be formally enacted until that new primary dwelling is fully built and the CFO has been issued. And then, in the conditions of approval is a note that the occupant or the owner must remove any legal, illegal or non-permitted structures on the site. And specifically, the one that we've not been able to find the specific building permit for is that small shed that's in the front yard. I think that is my last slide here. So, our staff recommendation is for you to adopt the categorical exemption under SEQA and to approve the conditional use permit based on the findings outlined in the staff report, subject to the conditions that are in attachment A. The applicant is in the audience if you have any questions of him, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions to staff? Commissioner Rotman?
Yeah, a couple. So, there, in the staff report versus the drawings that were part of the staff report, there's a discrepancy in the square footages. What, can you justify that? One, one, I think as the existing dwelling unit, it's on the drawing, I think it was like 11 or 1,200, but the staff report calls it 1,500. I'm sorry, it's 1426. Let's see here.
Yeah, it's 1,548, to answer your question.
And the same with the poolhouse, the, the ADU. It was 510 versus 564.
Right. There's discrepancies between what's on the drawings and what we have in the justification letter. And we took the square footages that we found, both in the county database and in the justification letter.
Okay. And then you mentioned something about the J-ADU. What's the maximum square footage for that?
I don't have the ADU ordinance in front of me. Maybe we can go through and answer any other questions, and that will give me a moment to go online and see if I can find those.
I think the planning director has that information.
Okay.
I'm looking it up, so we'll come back to it.
And then, also, part of that is, as I recall, a J-ADU has to be attached to a structure.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay, all right, great. And then, under the R1B zone, how many structures can you have on a lot?
Well, there isn't a, a particular limitation of the number of structures you can have. So, you could have a poolhouse. You could have a guest house that serves as a detached kind of bedroom. You can have an ADU. There isn't a finite number or maximum number of structures that you can have on an R1 lot.
So, the part of the reason I'm asking is about the storage, existing storage building in the front. And then also in the drawings, they're proposing to build a carport. So, if this is approved, we're talking about one, two, three, four, five, five structures potentially on this property.
In the case of the carport, that will need to be attached.
Okay, all right.
Right, but, but the, the number of structures is more limited by the other aspect, the development standards of the zoning, right?
Lot coverage.
So, lot coverage, setbacks, et cetera, but there's no, you know, three structures or five structures. It's all just determined by the other development standards.
Okay.
And, and I do have an answer to your, your, your previous question. 500 square feet is the maximum size of a J-ADU.
And, again, if we wanted to make this poolhouse or a J-ADU, we could also have that as part of the CUP as an exemption.
Well, the J-ADU needs to be attached to the structure, so it would not meet the definition of a J-ADU. It would be an ADU, which, yeah.
I, we'll get to that later. And are they required to put solar on the existing, on the existing structure that now is going to become the new ADU?
No.
No, okay. Let me just go through my notes. Okay, I think that should do it. Thank you.
Other questions?
No questions for me.
I had, I had a similar comment. I felt that it was a lot of buildings on a relatively narrow lot. And with, taking down the shed, would that be a condition to the, to our approval?
Again, I would, I would caution that we cannot make a determination on an appropriate number of structures on the site if it otherwise meets the development standards. I think what we would need to determine is whether the shed was permitted or not. It sounds like perhaps it wasn't, and so that may be the basis to require that it be removed. But, but it is not within the scope of your review tonight to determine that there's an upward limit of the number of structures that can be on the site.
I know, but we are approving a much bigger house than a typical ADU.
Correct, and I think your, your
There should be some trade-off there.
Scope is looking at that ADU itself, but not the number of structures on the site.
Yeah. Well, I just think because we are granting approval for such a big ADU, it's basically a three-bedroom ADU that there
That probably goes into comments later.
Okay.
Those aren't questions.
Yeah.
Other questions for staff? I have, I have one, and that is, is a kitchen actually, is it required to remove the kitchen? I, I think there's different points of view as to whether or not.
There are different points of view on that requirement. It's come up in other contexts, and we are not aware of a specific building code requirement that would say that the kitchen is necessary to be removed in order to not make it a dwelling unit. I think it comes down to how the certificate of occupancy is issued and how it's classified by the Department of Buildings. We have it in there essentially because you cannot have two ADUs on one site, setting aside the J-ADU issue. And a kitchen obviously makes it feel like an ADU, but I think that we can have that conversation. If the commission wishes to consider an alternate option, and I, my caution would be that I would probably want to include some language that allows staff to coordinate with the Department of Buildings to make sure that we're compliant both with state law as it pertains to ADUs, the zoning code, and the building code.
That was sort of where my question was going because my sense is that state law may be going in the direction, or our zoning update, of allowing more, more than one ADU on a property large enough to have, have two. So, I'm assuming there are ways of handling the potential for changes in state law in the future?
Yes, and I had also posed this question to the city attorney, who affirmed the direction in the staff report and the conditions about the requirement to remove the kitchen in the smaller of the existing structures. But yes, it's something that as ADU law has been evolving very rapidly this year, we may see that these kinds of structures may be possible.
Any, are there any more questions of staff? If not, the public hearing is open. The applicant has 10 minutes. Is the applicant here?
I am the applicant, and Mr. Lyon and his associates did a great job putting this together. Thank you. It is my hope that you guys approve the CUP, but I have nothing further to add than what he's already said.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this issue?
I see none that have signed up in advance. We do, again, have members online. If you wish to speak on this item, which is two A, the conditional use permit for, for an accessory dwelling unit, please raise your hand. No speakers, Madam Chair.
You have five minutes for rebuttal, but why don't you come back up? If, I'm assuming you may not have rebuttal, but do any members of the commission have questions of the applicant?
Hi, so what is the intent for this property? Are you going to be the primary resident? Are you renting it out, or is it a?
The intent is to develop the back end of the lot and rent it out, or sell it eventually in the future, but I won't
To rent out the back unit, or to rent out the entire property?
To rent out the whole thing. I don't really have any intent to live in it at this time, but once it gets built, you know, it's all open. I would say also that I had, there is solar in the house existing right now, that question you had earlier.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rotman?
Yeah, in the aerial photo, I don't know if staff can pull it up, it looks like there's some sort of wall that separates the existing front house and the existing ADU.
That is a row of ficus.
It is what?
A row of ficus.
A row of ficus, and is that going to remain?
I just put that up there to improve the aesthetic, the aesthetic of the, the lot itself because it is pretty vast back there.
Okay.
And open, so I just installed the ficus. Once we get through planning and figure out what kind of trees and plants they do allow, then that would be addressed. But there's no, either one way or the other, there's no need to keep it or remove it.
Okay. And may I ask how far along you are in the design of the new house, the rear house?
It's finished.
It's finished?
Yes, Hugh Capter designed it.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Regarding the carport, well, carport slash driveway, so if you're residing in the rear par, portion of the parcel, would you park in that front carport and have to walk all the way back to your property?
The front carport is for the ADU in front, once it becomes an ADU. There's a garage that's
There'll be a garage for the, okay. So, there'll be a driveway installed in that little
And right at the very end of that driveway will be a garage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. The hearing is closed, and the matter is before the commission. Comments?
I would like to see that shed removed as a condition, at least that would be one less building on the property.
Other comments?
I believe the shed is a condition of a, removal is a condition of approval.
My, yeah, my only comment is, and I had this discussion offline with the, with the staff as part of some emails, I don't feel comfortable with not seeing the rear house, that it really hasn't been made an official part of the conditional use permit because we don't have plans for it. So, I'm simply going to abstain from this vote.
I'm going to make a general comment that I'm in favor of this, in part because with ADUs, we get additional housing units. And it's the reason the AD, ADU law has been changing rapidly. I think that this in general is a good thing to utilize the back half of this property. And I would like, when I looked at it, some, some language in the conditions regarding the, what is now a, could be a second dwelling unit, in, in, if, in the event, the law changes, that we don't require the disabling of that unit. And that's, again, just because I don't think we have enough small units for people who can't afford to, to rent larger units and need a place to live, so.
Yeah, I've kind of struggled with this. I, in theory, I like the idea, but I, I was hoping that if the rear house was not further along, that maybe there would be an opportunity to turn the casita into a J-ADU and make this a little bit more legal, and maybe attach it in some way to the new house. And, but given that the house is designed, I'm not going to impose that on the, on the, the applicant. I would, though, there seems to be, to me, a lot of unknowns, and especially related to the ADU, the casita, related to the site plan. So, I think I would like to see it come back with a little bit more information about the site plan, and maybe at that time, we can get some more information about the rear pro, rear house as well.
Yes.
Member Rotman, could you be a little more specific in the additional information that you're seeking?
Well, you know, it just, when you look at the site plan, there's questions about access to the casita. There's questions about, realistically, this is going to be three, I think it's going to be three units on the property, right? And so, I'd like to see how you are actually accessing the casita. Casita, the way it's oriented on the site plan, really relates to the front house and not to the rear house. And you've got, you know, the retention basin between them, the pool is miles away. So, to me, there's, it seems like it's really just three units on the property, and I'd like to see more information about how you're accessing things, what the real relationships are between the three buildings, so. And whether the kitchen stays in or not, I mean, who's to say you can't put a microwave and a refrigerator in, I mean, so.
So, and when you say access, you're talking about both vehicular and pedestrian access into these units? Where does the car park if it is two, two ADUs in the lot rather than just one?
Yeah.
And so on?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So, is your suggestion that it come back now, or it come back later? Do you want us, are you suggesting we delay this to a date certain till we see that?
I'd ask the applicant how quickly they can respond. Okay.
So then, what I'm
Sorry.
So, what I'm hearing is a motion from you to continue this to a date certain, to look at the, the relationship, the proposed relationship of the units before we approve this.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a second for that motion?
I second.
Can we have clarity on, on the date certain that it being continued to? January 8th would be our first meeting in January. Is that the date?
If that works for the applicant?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comments on the motion? There being none, can you call? The roll, please.
Commissioner Rotman?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chair Wermick?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is also a public hearing. It is a request by Liloq 19 LLC for a conditional use permit for the redevelopment of Building I at the Spring Shopping Center to include the demolition of an existing building, building for the construction of a quick-service restaurant named Chick Filet with a drive-through located at 5200 East Ramone Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, this is a application by
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, this is an application by Lilac 19, who's the owner of the Spring Shopping Center. The request is for a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission, and then a major architectural application that will go before the Architecture Review Committee at a later date. The proposal is to demolish Building I, which is currently vacant and has been vacant for a while. There was a T-Mobile store in there that has moved to another location within the shopping center itself, and the property is now, this building is now totally vacant. There, as you mentioned, in the heading, they are to construct a 5,707-square-foot quick-service restaurant with 78 indoor and 34 outdoor seats, with three drive-through lanes for 49 spaces for stacking of vehicles. I would like to say that the zoning code, in looking at property development standards, does not mention, or is silent regarding the number of drive-through lanes that are appropriate. The only stipulation in the zoning code is that the drive-through lane need to stack seven cars. So this is beyond what the zoning code is asking, or permits. So looking at the site, the Building I is the one in the red box. This is the Spring Shopping Center, which contains the Home Depot, the Sprouts, which has recently opened, Aldi, Marshall's, and Ross, and then to the west, which is on the right-hand side, is Burlington, a Dollar Tree, and then the moved T-Mobile store. On the other side of the parking field is Massage Envy and Alta Beauty, and then at the corner are sort of a little restaurant row with other quick-service restaurants, and a Jack-in-the-Box with, has a drive-through, and also Wells Fargo, which has a drive-through. And closer up, looking at the site, the building that's in the red box is what's to be demolished and replaced with this quick-service restaurant. As I mentioned, Alta is to the left, or the west, and then Massage Envy. The parking field that is between the two buildings contains 114 parking spaces, and this would be shared by both of these buildings. In the site plan, you'll notice that the building is placed more towards the north, towards the Home Depot, or the larger parking field, and the three drive-through lanes will wrap around the building from the main parking field that we just talked about. So the building is, the development standards conforms to the building setbacks. The front of the building is 120 feet setback from Ramon Road. The side yards are 30 feet, and including a canopy that we'll discuss in a few minutes, and in the rear would be 72 feet. The building maximum height is 23 feet and conforms to the zoning code. The drive-through, as I mentioned, can, is, zoning code requires that it's stacked for seven cars. They're providing stacking for 49 in the three drive-throughs. And the applicant will describe to the Planning Commission how that will operate. Parking-wise, they are required to provide 52 parking spaces based upon the number of seats within the building itself. There are at least 88 spaces in that parking field between those two buildings that we just mentioned. There also includes EV charging that will be set right when the building is constructed, and then a future EV, 13 parking spaces, and then four accessible spaces. Site circulation, this is looking at the overall Spring Shopping Center. As you maneuver through Ramon Road, there is a full signaled intersection at Ramon and St. Louis Ray, and then also at the corner of Ginatri Trail and Ramon Road. So the red line shows site circulation into the center itself, and the blue line shows egress out of the shopping center. There are right-turn lanes in, if you're going west on Ramon Road towards the airport, there's a right-turn lane in, and then right along the west side of the new building, there's a one single left, right-turn out. There's a median that's in the middle of Ramon Road that you cannot make a left-hand turn. So the same situation is to the building to the west between where Alta and Massage Envy is, against the Panda Express building. It's, there's only a single lane right-turn out. There are times, we've discussed, that the shopping center has become busier now that there's a new tenant in the shopping center, and there is stacking that occurs when the light at Ramon and Ginatri is red. Cars do stack back to where the right-hand turnout is, and that's a condition that Caltrans operates that light at the corner of Ramon and Ginatri. There's no other intersections that could be signalized. The roads are as wide as they could possibly be, so there are no other road improvements that this big-box shopping center could do to change circulation. Also in your packet, there's a circulation plan within the parking field between the two buildings. This shows how buildings would enter the parking area and onto the three-lane drive-through, and that is the red, the blue, and the yellow. So when cars exit out of the double, the three lanes merge into two, and then they exit out, that is showing the blue line as they exit the Chick Filet drive-through area. The landscape plan shows new landscaping that will be added to the parking areas. There is a recommendation that staff would like to add, a condition of approval, that in the middle of the parking areas, right here, these trees are shoe-string acacias. They are not really a shade tree, so we'd like to have those replaced with a shade tree. And we'd also like that all tree sizes be 36-inch box trees. So landscaping will be added along the west side and along Ramon Road, enhancing the landscaping, and also there is a low wall that is required to screen parking and drive-throughs that will be built so that they're not visibly accessible when you are driving into the shopping center. The applicant has provided building elevations as to what the building would look like. These are showing the types of materials, the building heights, the different setbacks. We've worked with the applicant on the west elevation to extend awnings over the windows as this is west-facing and will have a lot of solar gain. And also, the south elevation has only one window that opens to, I think, a storage area, which we'll get to the floor plan in just a minute. Signage on the building will be part of a sign program reviewed, and that's not before the Planning Commission tonight. If they request anything that requires an amendment to the sign program, that would go before the Architectural Review Committee. As I mentioned, building materials include stucco in a cream color. Then trim would be a grayer color, and then aluminum windows in a black, and then stacked stone masonry veneer, which would mimic the stone that's currently in the shopping center itself, so that the buildings relate together. We'll go through a series of perspectives. This is looking at the exit, where exit drive-through area, where the food will be delivered to each of the individual cars. And this is the west-facing facade with the front entrance under the Chick Filet sign here. This is the west entrance also, and you'll notice that there is a, the outdoor seating area is to the south, adjacent to Ramon Road, but setback far enough that it will provide some relief from passing cars. This is the east side, which is the order canopy, and I will go to a photograph in just a minute of what the canopy will look like. This is it here. Staff was concerned as to what the lighting would be underneath the canopy. This is a typical canopy that they will be building here. This is a photograph, or a perspective of the outdoor seating area, which includes 24 seats. And then there's a landscape area between the seating area and the drive-through. And then this structure here is their trash enclosure, which will be fully enclosed and not accessible, other than through a locked gate. They provided a photometric plan that conforms to the city lighting ordinance. There will not be glare or lights that extend beyond the shopping center itself. And there's an example of a light pole that they will use LED lighting with cutoff lights that show, shine downward onto the parking lot. There was a discussion about, this is the west, oh, I'm sorry, the east side of the building. There's a little bit of a disconnect when you come into the, or exit the shopping center. There's a bump out in the landscaping here. We discussed this with the applicant, and they're willing to pull this curb back so that the driveways line up. There most likely are utilities underneath this landscaped area, but it would not prohibit the widening of the driveway itself.
Can you show us that on the site plan as well?
Sure. Let me go back to the site plan. I know it's kind of hard, maybe we can see it here. So in this landscape plan, you'll see that this is wider here. So they would pull this back so that it, see, there's a little bit of a jog in the driveway. This would line up, so it may move it back three or four feet so that there is a clear driveway, and not this sort of maneuvering through the exit.
Thank you.
These are perspective, or I'm sorry, site photographs of what the site looks like now. It's a flat site. It'll be very even with the street. So with the addition of the low wall, it will screen the three drive-throughs. This is the elevate, or the site photograph looking west towards the airport, and this is the entrance, the right turn in, and the right turn out onto Ramon Road. So the findings that the Planning Commission needs to make in order to approve the conditional use permit are listed in your staff report and in the resolution. Number one is that the project meets the zoning development standards, and as I described, it meets the setbacks, the heights. All development standards are met. The second finding is that the project meets the general plan goals. The general plan designation is regional business center, and that is a general plan designation that provides space for large shopping centers, office complexes, other types of uses that service not just the city, but other areas within the Coachella Valley. The zone, or the general plan has goals and objectives. A couple of them are listed here, that the project will encourage and introduce new uses into a shopping center that has, this building has been vacant for a while, encourage the reuse of obsolete commercial properties, encourage development of restaurants in a mixed-use area. The shopping center is considered a mixed-use, and encourage a mix of uses and provide new uses. So with the demolition of the building and the construction of the new restaurant, that encourages a mix of, additional mixes of uses. Number three, the site is adequate in size to accommodate the intended use. The building that is there now that's being demolished is larger. It's about 10,000 square feet. So the new restaurant will be half the size of the existing building. In looking at drainage and so forth, there is some new impervious surfaces in that area that's between the drive-through and the outdoor patio. So some areas have been more open space, but the addition of the drive-throughs does include more pavement, but it does not increase it any more than the building that is currently there. The site relates to surrounding streets and is properly designed to carry traffic. The shopping center was designed to its fully-developed capabilities, meaning all streets and roads, and have been signalized and widened to a point where there, no study or report would recommend that anything else be added to the road network as it's fully built out and could not be widened or added to. And then number five, conditions imposed deemed necessary. There is a set of conditions from administrative planning, engineering, and fire that are included in the report. So staff is recommending approval based upon that the project meets the development standards that are in the zoning code. We would like to, one more thing is that back when the shopping center was developed, there was an EIR that was approved. There is, the EIR still stands. The proposed project is not increasing building size, is not increasing building height that is currently there, so an addendum to the EIR was not required. Added conditions includes, as I mentioned, revising the plantings in the parking lot, that the tree box sizes be 36, and then if there's any signs that are non-conforming with the shopping center's sign program, that it go back to the Architecture Review Committee. There has been, the Planning Commission had been directed to public comments that had been received over the past few days. There was access provided to you all to read those public comments. There was a public business disclosure form that was added also for Lilac LLC, so you could find out who those business persons are. The applicant is going to be making a presentation, also a PowerPoint presentation. So the owner of the shopping center is here, and then representatives from Chick Filet, and also the owner of the Chick Filet in Palm Desert is here. So Chair, that concludes my report, and the applicant, as I mentioned, is here.
Thank you. Before I go further, just wanted to confirm with the Planning Director that this is a land use hearing, and it is not in any way a hearing on the applicant themselves, but on the proposed land use that's before us. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a land use application that is before you for a conditional use permit, which means that the decision that you are making tonight is being made in the context of the requirements of the zoning code, including the five findings that are outlined in your staff report, as well as what Glenn just went through. So that is how staff have evaluated the application, and that is how the Planning Commission is being asked to evaluate the application, is based on the findings that exist in today's zoning code.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Commissioner Murphy?
Can we go back to the findings? I think it was number four, traffic. I just want to make sure I'm clear. The, it sounded like, Glenn, you indicated that traffic in the area is already at capacity. Maybe I'm reading between the lines?
What I was meant, what I was inferring, or referring to is that the lanes are as wide as they could possibly be. The traffic signals at Ramon and Ginatri, and St. Louis Ray and Ginatri are double left-hand turns out and in. There's no possible improvements that could be made to those street network. Because when, as I mentioned, Ginatri Trail is a Caltrans signalized intersection. So when the shopping center was built, it was built to the maximum amount of traffic that could flow through the area.
I think another way to think about it is there was a full EIR done at the time that the springs was originally entitled, and that included an analysis of, you know, the potential traffic impacts that would be generated by the full build-out of this development. And so the road network has been designed to accommodate the flow of the traffic that we anticipated from the springs, and for various reasons, looking at both SEQA and the development that's proposed, in coordination with our engineering department, there were no additional improvements that we felt would become necessary by virtue of replacing what's there now with this potential development, and that was the determination that was made between us, the applicant, and the city engineer, and the engineering department. So there were no additional improvements that were going to be deemed necessary to accommodate this specific piece of this development, and perhaps if the city's engineering department wants to clarify, since we are not engineers, they can do so.
If there are other questions regarding traffic, this might be the time to raise them.
I have a traffic question. Looking across the street where the canes went in last year, those traffic lanes block access to that shopping center routinely on a weekend. This seems to be a little better situated, seeing that the traffic lanes are going to go around on Ramon, rather than blocking, but the exit is the issue. You're trying to come in, especially with the handicap, using a handicap spot? If you're trying to come in, especially with the handicap, using a handicap spot that's right against the building, it's often difficult to break through the, the chains of cars coming out of the egress. Not really a question, but it's just...
You're referring to the site plan, the proposed site plan?
Yes.
Yes. Well, you know, that's a conflict. ADA parking spaces need to be placed as close to the front entrance as possible.
The, I don't think that answers your question. The question, and from what I understand, and it's probably mine too, is the internal, the internal traffic in circulation in the site can, and has, where we did two, I think for the first time, two lanes around it, created major snafus that I think not only the commissioner is raising, but some of the letters, I think the letter from Parnell that came to us talked about there being six months of difficulty of working internally in the site. So the, I think your question is more internal than external traffic. And if I went to that, I don't know that the 2005 EIR covers the internal issues with traffic with three lanes, three lanes of cars circulating and exiting and entering.
I'm not sure that we can answer all of those questions, and some of it may be more appropriately directed to the applicant in terms of what considerations went into their site planning and design here. You know, they operate, they operate these restaurants throughout the country, so they may, may be able to shed some light on why they've designed this the way they have, and how they think the circulation addresses those concerns or not. I will say from our perspective, we have not been provided data to, to say whether or not this fully addresses the anticipated volume of, of traffic that we would see in this area. But we have been informed and influenced by lessons learned in the other projects that you're referencing where there are conflicts in circulation. And I, I think the applicant will likely say that the addition of the third lane here may be in some ways to help address and minimize those conflicts, but I'm going to ask them to speak to that in more detail.
But on other traffic questions, and this is for the engineer, you're saying, because we know that in some number of years, the airport is going to double in size, and that there are going to be difficulties down the street at Kirk Douglas, and that there may also be backups in that the street is fully built out. So do you want to talk about your traffic conclusions and what things you've come into your conclusions and what, what doesn't?
From engineering over here, Jonathan. When it comes to the development here, we have not seen any of the airport master plan and whatnot as of yet. And to have this development sort of preemptively designed around those, I don't know what would really be possible at this point in time to design around. It'd more so be something that the airport would have to design around, not so much this development.
Yes, I would concur with what engineering has said, and said there will be a SEQA process associated with the airport master plan. We don't know enough information about what that will look like conclusively to sort of base land use decisions today on what may happen or not happen in the future. But the airport will be required as part of their SEQA analysis to look at some of those issues, and that will move through the process and certainly be informed by what we are assuming about development in the surrounding area, including this project.
Other questions of staff?
Yes.
Commissioner, yes, go ahead. We're queued up.
Glenn, could you go back, I think it's, well, it's forward from this slide, I assume. I think it's, the, the plan was called EXH-B. It was, keep going, this one. So if I'm reading this correctly, I see a building there ghosted in to the right of the drive-through lanes. I don't know what that is. That building is not there. Do you know what that is?
Right, that, I don't know.
Does that have approval?
No. That building is not there. I don't even, I'd have to zoom in and see what that is.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And then I thought you had mentioned there's a right turn off of Ramon into the site, but there is not. There's a bus lane.
This driveway here is the right turn in.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was assuming you were mentioning the westbound traffic on Ramon. There is no right turn into the Springs Center site.
Well, if you're going west, there is, there's one here.
There's three, no, there's three lanes of through traffic on Ramon.
No, there, there is an entrance here. There's a picture of it.
There's an entrance, but there's no right turn off of Ramon. No, there's no, I'm sorry, there's no dedicated right turn into, no dedicated deceleration right turn lane into this.
Right, there's the bus stop, and you can see it here. The bus pulls in off of the road.
And I will say, as a frequent user of that center, that is a conflict point now for people just turning in to go to Home Depot oftentimes, where cars are, assuming cars are going to go straight through, and they end up slamming on their brakes because of the cars turning into that center. I can only assume it's going to get more congested once this, you know, very active restaurant would open. So that was just a comment on that. Now theoretically, if, if a determination was made that a right turn lane would be appropriate there, I'm assuming it could be, it could be provided, because the property owner is the same.
There would have to be street dedication, and we'd have to talk to Sunline to see if that would work.
Right, right.
With their pullout.
Right, it would, it would create a conflict with their bus, and that may be the main reason why it's not feasible. Okay, now if you could go back to the site plan that shows the drive-through, that, that one's fine. This would be at the, at the top of the site. Now, the two lanes that are exiting after just getting their food, there's two lanes that are exiting out to the left, the arrows to the left, presumably because you can't get out going to the left out of the shopping center. Everybody who exits with their food is going to exit to the right from those drive-through lanes.
That's right.
How did you envision that two lanes, assuming there's two cars there, there's cars there at the same time, which will happen often, maybe not predominantly, but often, would you assume with this plan that both of those cars were going to turn right at the same time and just take up the entire driveline there?
Right. From our experience with Raising Cane's, which is across the street, which was also one of my projects, that came up. And since it's been built and under construction, we have observed that. And the Chick-fil-A people can talk about their operations, but they have ways of delivering food so that cars would be staggered, it would not two leave at the same time.
Okay. That's a good, good point. My other question would be if, if it indeed would be a conflict, it was, is there any way that those two lanes could be merged down to one as an exit? And again, maybe the applicant can, can address that.
That would be an applicant question.
Okay, I appreciate the discussion about the bump, the bump fix there for that dogleg. I assume that's sort of addressing that issue that I had earlier raised. So I appreciate that. A question about the landscaping, shoestring acacia. I, I believe that if they're allowed to grow, as they should be, and not whack back, they are actually shade trees. They're quite light and wispy, but they provide quite a bit of shade. So just something to look at there. But more importantly for me is the loss of all of the palm trees. You know, we can debate all day whether or not Mexican palm trees are appropriate, but the fact is this shopping center on its perimeter, every building has, including this existing building, has a significant number of Mexican palm trees there. It sort of defines part of the image of the shopping center. And I don't, unless I'm not reading this correctly, I'm not seeing any of those. I'm just seeing the 15 or more that are being removed. Is there a reason we didn't want to push for at least some of those Mexicans to either be replanted or transplanted, you know, moved off-site during construction and then, and then brought back in to try to keep some more of that existing image of the entire center?
Right, let me go to one of the photographs of the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there you see what I, what you're mentioning.
And there's further, further to the east and further to the west, all along there, at every building, there's a number of those. And I'm just concerned that by not having any, that we're, we're sort of moving towards this looking differently than the rest of the center.
We can ask the applicant. I think that the landscape plan will be reviewed by the ARC, and that may be something that could be reviewed.
Can I add to the landscape?
Yes.
I'm not sure what page is, you have a page that shows a patio area facing west where outdoor seating is, will be located, right here. That's going to be in direct sunlight. It's facing west. There's no shade, that awning won't provide any shade at all. I would suggest either more trees, higher trees there to provide shade for those individuals sitting. Because anything else with the wind, I think that would be the safest solution to provide shade for the patio area.
So if we go back to the landscape plan, there are two trees that are located here.
Yeah, I see that.
South side. That's something that we could...
The desert willow palaverde is a tree that has gotten blight. It has a worm. It's being, many, many companies are not using it anymore in the desert because both it's blown over and also it's no longer thriving. But I wanted to speak to landscape because I don't, I do not believe the center itself is in conformance with the requirements the city has for landscape. If you go through the center, you will see that many of the trees, most of the trees have been topped so that they can't grow, and they don't have a canopy. Where they're not topped, there aren't trees. You have empty spaces where there are no trees, and they haven't been replanted. The, this, the history of that shopping center in terms of its foliage and its canopy is a joke. And it is something that everybody who goes past it comments on in the city at some point in time, that the center does not in any way meet its obligations to create a shaded parking area. So I'm, I'm just going to throw that in. You, you show us only the trees in this section, but the center is out of compliance with what the city requires. And it's something that I would like to know what we can do about. So that's a question.
So the, there have been code actions on the shopping center in the past, and the shopping center owner will replace some of the trees. I can say that the representative of the shopping center is here today and will talk to you, and I'm sure she's listening.
Why are you bringing this forward if they're out of compliance? That's my question.
It's a good question. I think that it can be addressed through a condition of approval.
Next, next question, next topic.
I have simple questions. On the site plan, there's two areas that are shaded in yellow. One may be easement along Ramon, and, but I'm not sure, because I couldn't find out exactly what that was. And if it is an easement, what kind of easement is it?
I think that's just a CAD shading. I don't, it's not, it's not easements.
Okay. And then the other one, which is not on this plan, is over on the north side. North side, there's a little bit of parking, it's not on this drawing, there's a little bit of parking that is opposite the, is part of this property, but is on the other side of the major drive aisle. Let me see if I can, if you go to sheet SP1.
Do I have SP1 in the slides?
I don't know.
Which one is it? Right, so the least area of Chick-fil-A does extend up in this area up here.
Right. And so there's a portion of that that's shaded yellow in the plan. And it was not clear why either one of those two areas were, had the yellow, yellowish color highlight.
I, I see it. The applicant will have to describe that. I'm not sure what that, it's, could be a CAD shading.
And then there's talk about EV stations, but I couldn't find those anywhere on the plan. And maybe, again, that's something for the applicant to respond to, but...
I think they were next to the handicap.
They're next to the handicap.
Next to the, if you go to SP1, they're next to the handicap spaces, and then the 13 spaces that are, are future are on the, the top side of the drive aisle. Let me point it, let me go to this slide up here. These are future EV, and you can see the little notation.
Oh, okay. I must be, I must be missing the notations, but I'll take your word for it.
It's, it's shown better on, it's EXHB, Exhibit B, which is towards the end of, of your package.
Okay.
And it's very small print, so you would be forgiven for missing it.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Morell, you had questions?
Yes, I'm very familiar with this shopping center. I'm there quite often, particularly to go to FedEx. And if you go to the, the exit to Ramon, to the west of this site, it's a very heavily trafficked exit, and I think the majority of the people leaving would use that exit, because you can either go west on Ramon, or you can go south on Ginatri. So if you're going west or south, that's the primary exit. And there's already seven fast food places that utilize that exit and the FedEx. So it's pretty constant all day long. It starts in the morning and goes all day. And I really feel that there should have been some kind of traffic study of what the impact of all these cars are going to be to being able to exit. And if you want to exit to get south on Ginatri, you have to cross about four lanes of traffic. There's three lanes going west, one lane going north, and two lanes going south. So there's six lanes of traffic in that area that you have to deal with if you're exiting in that direction. It's quite often backed up. And that's pretty much the only way, if you're going to go south, that's about it, you know, in order to hit Ginatri.
So the question is, the roads are as wide as they can go.
Yeah, I think it does warrant, an amendment to the EIR though, from 2005. I think it's a totally different situation than probably what was contemplated 20 years ago.
I wanted to follow that, because that, I do think that, that we have SEQA, and we have the old EIR, but I do not think it covers the internal circulation here. And I use this all the time for the bank and occasional fast food. And exiting in either direction is always difficult. It, it is very trafficked, and then it's very trafficked to cross over toward, toward Home Depot and, and utilizing that area. So one, one question is, can we, it seems appropriate that we can ask for more clarification on this, and whether an addendum is necessary from our consultants. The second that I'm looking at with this is, we have never done three lanes for fast food delivery. That's 47 idling cars. And that seems to me that that was also not covered. The Wells Fargo Bank is one lane. And the, and the Jack in the Box is one lane. We're, we had a problem with two lanes across the street, and we're now being asked to go to three lanes. So the appropriate, and maybe this is a city attorney or planning director question, is it in our purview to ask, to have a review to see if we need an addendum for either of these reasons?
So I can't speak to the analysis that was done in the original EIR, and it may be good for the applicant to speak to some of their assumptions and some of their own internal analysis. However, and I see Attorney Priest has, has turned his camera on so he can correct me if I, if I misstate. We have made, we have made a recommendation that we believe that the EIR and the statement of overriding considerations that were done at the time of the original entitlement can be used to support this project, given that it is a reduction in the overall size of the building and for the reasons that Glenn had stated in his presentation. However, it's ultimately, you know, your decision to, to make that finding and determination. And if you feel that additional analysis may be warranted, that is something that we could coordinate with the city attorney's office, the city engineer, and the applicant to see what may or may not be required to supplement that analysis. And, and I look to our attorney to weigh in if I've misspoken.
Oh, I don't think I could have said it better. Thank you, Mr. Adlin.
Thank you. Are there other questions of staff?
I just had one other comment regarding the sighting. And I realize there's probably nothing the owner can do about this, but it would seem to me that from a pedestrian standpoint, you'd want to cluster the restaurants all together so people don't have to drive from Panera Bread over to Chick-fil-A. But I realize that's not really a question we can answer.
Madam Chair, we may want to move into the public hearing soon so that we can have the applicant provide their perspective on this. So we're not speaking on their behalf, and then we can come back.
Right. At this point, the public hearing is open. The applicant has 10 minutes.
We may just need to go to the next presentation in the control room.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We're excited to be here tonight on behalf of Chick-fil-A and the property owner. My name's Jeremiah Cover, here with 4G Development and Consulting. We've been working with the city staff since early this year on this project, and it's been a pleasure collaborating with the full team to get to this point. As Glenn already knows, we have no issues with the conditions for this project and are ready to work with the city and continue with it. We do have a quick presentation, and then we'll be willing to ask, answer any questions that you all may have. First up is our site plan. As you can see, we do have the, the drive-through going around the building, three lanes narrowing down into two. In just a moment, Eric Baker from Chick-fil-A will be able to go into more of the operational details for that and why that will help with the site and the traffic and keep any issues from coming up. Also on the site plan, we do have two added safe pedestrian access points to the Chick-fil-A and the shopping center. Next up, we do have a few updated 3D renderings for the project to give some more context on what it could look like. Here is the, the front of the building. As you can see, it does have the ADA parking stalls right there in the front by the entrance, as well as the electric vehicle parking on the right. Along the south of the building, we have the patio. One point that was brought up a few moments ago is the shading. You can see the trees there providing shade from the south for those winter days. Has 24 seating areas, and then it will have fans, misters, and heaters, depending on the weather, to keep it pleasant for anyone who would be dining outdoors. Here's the drive-through entrance, also shows one of the pedestrian access points crossing over there. And then this is on the north end of the building, the outdoor meal delivery zone. Next few slides, we'll be looking more from the outside of the parcel, interior. This is the path of travel from Ramon Road sidewalk, going across the drive-through entrance towards the front of the building. And then on the, the shopping center's entrance drive aisle, this is from the east, looking towards the building. The screening wall and the landscaping is provided there as well for, and then zooming out a bit more, we have a couple more bird's eye views of the project. This is from Ramon Road on the, the southwest corner, looking east at the project with the updated landscaping, screening wall. And then this is from the other southeast corner, looking westward. Once again, you can see the, the drive-through, the screening wall, as well as the, the updated landscaping and the project there. Once again, thank you all to the city staff for all the work so far. I'm excited for this project to reduce the, the size of the building, the added impact to the city. Now I'd like to ask Eric Baker with Chick-fil-A to talk more about the development side of the project.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and Glenn, thank you so much for your efforts helping to get us here tonight. You know, with regard to the three to two lane drive-through configuration, I would, I'll use a planning analogy, just the same way we draft stormwater mitigation for a hundred-year storm. We're planning our drive-through both with the worst-case scenario in mind, in addition to giving our operator the most flexibility that we possibly can. So that third lane, we have a really robust mobile ordering platform. We have more and more guests that are utilizing that mobile platform, and so that third lane gives our operator an option to use that for outside right lane as a mobile through fulfillment lane. A lot of our operators will take that three down to two. They'll take the two down to one, as one of you, I think, suggested at that fulfillment point. And that space gives them, again, maximum flexibility. So if they see that there's a problem with the egress, with the two lanes, it is stop sign controlled, I believe, in the plan. And that pink box that is at the order fulfillment area, that indicates the canopy that's there, and that is staffed with team members. And I would normally speak to our operational capacities and our operator model, which is our secret sauce. But we're fortunate enough tonight to have Mr. David Peck, who is your local operator, to speak to any of this if you have any additional questions. What else was there that we could address? As far as the trees, we are open to whatever the conditions are. We're more than eager to work with the city and the desert environment that is out here. So I'll just say, y'all tell us what kind of trees to put in, and we'll do it. Were there any other things that I could? Okay. I'll introduce Mr. Peck, and then we've got, on behalf of the applicant, the center owner, Sarah.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's great to be here. My name is David Peck. I'm the operator of Chick-fil-A Palm Desert. We opened in July of 2022. What I love about the proposed drive is different than our drive, where we have two drives, one that we use, as was shared, mobile through, and then a second drive, which is for other guests that don't have this, is that when I look at the, the last summer, we had 78, 78 days of 110-plus. And so one of the secret sauce things that we do is we have folks outside on IPOs. This allows us to queue in two sections of cars for general public, and then it allows us to continue to serve our mobile guests. Right now, when I look at today's data for Chick-fil-A Palm Desert, which is a sizably larger restaurant than this will be, by the time this potentially opens, we'll have added in La Quinta, as well as Indio. And so this will be the fourth Chick-fil-A in the Coachella Valley. This allows for us to be able to serve people efficiently, but our total count per hour right now is about 107 to 125 cars per hour when we look at drive. One of the things that's unique about the Coachella Valley is also that folks really do love dine-in experiences. And so our, our, our in-restaurant and outdoor seating is used at a much higher rate than other places around the country, where it's considered much more fast food. And so I'm, I'm thrilled with the dine-in options and the expanded outdoor seating. From a capacity standpoint, we average two to three, three and a half minutes when we look at drive. And as shared earlier, when we look at the double lane exit, it is a staggered situation where our team, I, and others will out, will be out serving guests, serving their meals, and ensuring that we help mitigate traffic by providing it in a way that allows them to exit. So again, thrilled to be able to ask, answer any other questions. Having said that, I love being in the Coachella Valley. When I look at what our charge is, it's to provide honor, dignity, and respect to everybody. And when I look at the 115 team members that we've hired in Palm Desert, it represents the diversity of folks from the Coachella Valley, every single aspect. And so again, I believe that the Palm Springs location will continue to add to our ability to provide a great guest experience in the Coachella Valley.
Thank you. Where are we with time?
I believe there's one more speaker for the applicant, and we have a minute and a half.
We have Sarah from the applicant team come on up.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you very much, staff. It's been quite a few years now. I don't know how many of you remember when this was landfilled. So it's been over 20 years. We're very proud of this development. It's really evolved. We still work regularly with our regulators to make sure that we maintain and compliance. We're very happy to see that our team, Carrie Kramer, with our leasing department, we've been working very diligently to try to maintain our tenants and also be able to re-tenant the spaces that have become vacant, especially after COVID. We were hit like everyone else. As you can see, many big boxes you don't have left. We were no exception. We're so happy that we were able to do the Sprouts that is now open, the landscaping and some of the other items and improvements onto the center. That's something, as you could see in these beautiful pictures here, that will be coming on board. And that's something that we've been waiting for our tenants, like they've indicated. It's been over a year that we've been working on this. It will be all addressed concisely so that we can also have a, a beautiful center that will age properly and, you know, change with the times, the climate, et cetera. And-
... open Sprouts, to have Chick-fil-A resolve the issue that we've had in that one building, building I, and other tenants that are going to, we are actually at the point where we hopefully will be 100% leased. We'll, we have tenants coming in to where other tenants have left. And it's just the center is, is finally really coming alive, and we're excited to be here tonight and, and hope that, that we can have Chick-fil-A here. Thank you.
Time you're here for any questions. Thank you.
If, if there are members of the public who wish to speak, would you come forward?
So I will, I will call those who signed up first. We'll start with Bernard Rotner, followed by Philip Ching. And, and each speaker has three minutes.
Good evening, Chair Warmick and Planning Commission members. My name is Bernard Rotner. I'm the Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission, and I'm speaking tonight on Item 2B, the proposal for construction of the Chick-fil-A restaurant at the Springs Shopping Center. In the nearly 20 years since the Environmental Impact Report on which this project is being considered was released, our planet has experienced measurable warming and climate change that threaten our health and our livelihoods. The Office of Sustainability and the Sustainability Commission developed a sustainability plan in 2016 and a climate action plan, a roadmap, in 2021. The former has the long-term goals for reducing citywide greenhouse gas emissions, while the latter has more specific steps to be taken in the coming years. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions worldwide will help to slow down and reverse global warming. California Senate Bill 32, signed in 2016, requires significant reductions in greenhouse gas emissions statewide in certain years. In 2020, Palm Springs met the required 15% reduction from 2010 levels because of the adoption of the desert community's energy carbon-free program. And a much larger reduction, 40%, from 2020 levels is required by 2030. Motor vehicle transportation accounts for about 50% of those greenhouse gas emissions. The City Council has stated many times in recent years that climate change and sustainability will be considered in all decisions. During the visioning sessions for the City 2022, it was stated that sustainability should underpin all priorities, programs, and projects. Therefore, we recommend that a more rigorous analysis of the impacts of the Chick-fil-A project on environment and climate, especially on the three-lane drive-through and traffic in the surrounding area, be conducted. And any needs of mitigation should be identified before the Planning Commission makes any decision on whether or not to proceed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, Philip Ching.
Howdy, gorgeous neighbors. My name's Philip Ching. I am 31, and I'm here to help you guys get this approval across the finish line. But I want to add in some conditions or urge you guys to do some conditions for me, please. That patio of those trees are very sad. It's 118 degrees, so that, that should get fixed. So for sure, the patio area should get fixed. And then if you could request that the structure that itself don't look so sad. It looks like a copy paste of every other building across America. And I would like to keep our Palm Springs visuals. So if you can urge it to keep it to look more Palm Springs-y, unless like a 16-year-old made Chick-fil-A on Sims 2, I'd appreciate that. And other than that, thank you for your time, and let's get Chick-fil-A up and running. It's the best chicken, and now I'm Wonder Raising Canes. So I appreciate you.
If there's anyone else in the chamber that would like to speak, come forward now. If not, I'm going to ask those who are online to raise your hand if you intend to speak on this item so that I can unmute you. Madam Chair, I see no additional speakers.
Thank you. If the applicant, you have five minutes for rebuttal, but if you come back up for questions as well.
No more comments, but are ready for any questions.
Are there questions?
And I'm not sure if you could answer this, or perhaps the actual operator from the Palm Desert. Could we go back a couple slides to where it shows the entry of the three lanes into the drive-through, and it's got like an overhead structure? So my question is, operationally, if I'm not using the app and haven't done anything ahead of time, I just want to come through the drive-through lane, am I going to see a, a green light or anything? What's to direct me to which of these lanes I should go to?
Yeah. Commissioner Scott, that's a great question. Above both, the kind of nine-foot clearance bars, it will say drive-through, one, drive-through two, and then on the far side, it'll say mobile drive-through or mobile through. And we have signage delineated both on the ground, but also above, so that then it provides absolute clarity.
Okay, then following up on that, if I, if I go in, so the, the left two lanes theoretically are the open for anybody to order, what if I get in one of those two lanes and I see that I've made a bad mistake in that there's only two people at the order window on the other lane, and I'm stuck behind seven? It looks like with the pavement markings, I can scoot across there. Is that the intent, or do you not-
It's a great question. We do have that happen occasionally. Right now, we have yellow delineators in our drive. Those can be moved, but if that happens, usually you can tell that the guest needs assistance. We bring an iPad over, we take their order, and we continue to serve them.
Okay. And then the last question for me on the operation, on the food delivery, I think you've answered it. So there's actually somebody that goes to that window and goes to that second car in line and delivers that food to them. It's not done automatically with some convey- It's not done automatically with some conveyor?
That's a great question. No, it's presently done via people, but team members, and including myself, but that is being tested at other locations, but it won't be at this location.
Well, how do you pay?
I'm sorry, what?
How do you pay? Is there someone taking your order and collecting your cash?
Yeah, so we have two different forms. For the mobile through, it's tied to your credit card. For regular drive, we have individuals that have basically a cash belt, and we change those depending on...
So they're standing there with cash in their pocket without any security all day long?
Yes, that's correct. And it's changed every hour, so it's a pretty minimal amount. About 78 to 80% of our total transaction at Chick-fil-A Palm Desert is done via credit card.
Go ahead, Commissioner Murphy.
In the report, there's a reference to the three-lane merging to two as a concept. So I guess my question is, how often and where has this three-lane to two-lane been tested? And so that's one part of the question. The other part of the question is, have you done studies on when these drive-throughs, these queuing lanes, get close to capacity, you know, getting to be full? What is the behavior of the consumer? Do they just leave the restaurant entirely and decide to go somewhere else? Or do they park, get out of their car, and go into the restaurant to eat? And what's behind these questions is capacity and number of idling vehicles.
Yeah, it's a great question. So first, the three-to-two lane is actually just opened at Cal State San Bernardino. It's Cal State San Bernardino freestanding unit. It has the three-to-two lane, and it's the two traditional lanes that then merge into one lane. You've got order boards on both of those if you have to move to heat mitigation or cold, but most of those are all served with IPOs. And then the mobile through lane is a singular lane. Right now, that's about 35% of our total drive-through volume at Chick-fil-A Palm Desert uses the mobile through. And so that's a transaction where they order on their phone, they scan a QR code, and then it immediately goes to our kitchen and they pull forward. The second question, could you ask that again real quick?
Well, the question is about what the consumer behavior... I'm thinking of a worst-case scenario when you have 107 cars going through per hour. Chick-fil-A is wildly successful.
Yeah.
It's popular, and there's a lot of traffic coming through. And that means there's 49 cars, big chunks of the day, that are idling in the queue lanes. So that's my question, is if you ended up with just one lane, or maybe two lanes, what happens in those fill-up? Do those consumers just... Have you done studies? Do they just leave, you know, because there's too long of a line, and they just leave and don't go to the restaurant? Or do they park and go into the restaurant to eat instead of waiting in the queue lane?
Yeah, so it's a great question. First, often they'll park and go into the restaurant. Second, they'll park and go into and use carryout on their mobile phone, or they will leave. When we look at exit counts, we're looking at about 30 seconds. Each car is exiting our drive, and if we can get that down to about 24 seconds, it allows us to eliminate that idle time. But again, that's based on efficiency of how we cook the food in the restaurant. It's not pre-prepared. We're looking at predictive analytics, and we're trying to move people as well with as great food as we can. But there are a lot of studies that are done pretty regularly on that.
Thank you.
It could be noted probably also, as David touched on earlier, right now he is the only restaurant in the valley. This will be the fourth, and so his 107 cars, the chain-wide average for the last 30 days is 67 cars per hour. So just to lend a little more context to what it would be in a more robust Chick-fil-A area.
Oh, Commissioner Rotman.
Yeah, thank you. So talk to me... So on the site plan, it gives distances for stacking. And how do you calculate the 49 cars? And from what point to what point does that mean? So as an example, one lane, I think, had, if I can blow it up, like 300 and... I don't know, it's not clear, 300 and some odd feet cars stacked. What does that translate to numbers of cars?
Each car is estimated at 20 feet.
Okay. And is that to the point from the entry to the point where they're ordering?
Entry to the meal-delivery zone.
Okay, so it's all the way around. All right. And I think you gave me a number of time it takes from the time an order is placed to the time the food is ready. And so what is that typically?
So typical is not probably reasonable because we have variations throughout the day, but right now, we have an exit time from order to delivery of food of 2 minutes and 29 seconds at Chick-fil-A Palm Desert.
And worst-case scenario?
Well, worst-case scenario, if we get upside down, it can be five, six, seven minutes. But again, if we look at the average, our goal is to average under three minutes when we look at the order to exit time for total time.
Okay. And then I've not been to a Chick-fil-A, and I'm not familiar with your operation, but you have staff members that are actually delivering the food to the cars in the meal-delivery area.
That's correct.
And so how do you accommodate them when it's 115 degrees out for 78 days in a row?
Yeah, 115 degrees. We have fans, we have misters, and we have an awning that covers it. We'll move toward directors, so during those time periods, we will rotate folks every 10 minutes. And so it's just part of our heat mitigation plan.
And let's see here. And in looking at the plan, and it seemed like there was a disconnect between the indoor dining and the outdoor dining. There's quite a bit of a distance between the entry door and then where the actual outdoor dining is. In more traditional restaurants, I would think you would want them closer. And so just from an operational point, it just seems kind of odd to me. Any comment on that?
Again, I think we were just talking about how the site is laid out. From the standpoint of delivering food, we have a unique situation where if you dine into the restaurant, we give you a marker that has a color and an icon, and then team members deliver the food to you. So the only thing you're really responsible for is carrying your beverages, walking outside and finding a table, and then we actually carry the food and deliver it to you. So we'll have a little more experience navigating the property and the landscape of people to get it to you appropriately.
Okay.
As far as the guests feel, sir, they'll have the same welcoming care as they do inside. That canopy will similarly have fans and misters and heating elements for the winter.
And then let's talk a little bit about the landscaping. So I asked about a yellow area along Ramon, and I'm not sure what that is, and I'm not sure whether you're enhancing the landscaping there or, you know, exactly what that area is.
On the site plan, the yellow shaded areas, those are representing easements on the property.
And whose easement is it?
Long Ramon Road, I believe that's a public utility easement.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And what... How are you adding new landscaping, significant landscaping there?
Yeah, we do have the slide for that. Here you can see the Ramon Road and the new landscaping.
Okay.
Landscaping is permitted in an easement.
Landscaping is?
Permitted in an easement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Yes, go ahead.
I have a question for the shopping center rep, the young lady, if she could come up. It seems there... I use the shopping center about three times a week. It seems there is a relative lack of visible pavement markings throughout the center such as stop bars, stop lettering, and directional arrows. Would the center as a whole, not just this new Chick-fil-A site, would the center as a whole be willing to improve the pavement markings if it's determined that that could actually help traffic flow and safety factor?
We recently paved a portion of it, and now we're going to do the other side so that the restriping, et cetera, that will be coming online.
Okay.
And it has to do with operations and how we... the sequencing, so that we don't interfere with traffic and the operations.
Because it seems like a lot of the concern over internal circulation can be handled with some simple pavement markings to put people's mind at ease and let them know who's got the right of way and such. And I think that could go a long ways in making the internal circulation work a lot better.
You are correct, and that's something that's coming online.
Yeah, we actually recently did part of the center for Sprouts. We phase it so as not to interrupt the whole thing at once. The food court is the next stage, and so we're doing that next, and we will be doing. That's not a problem.
My questions go back to the site plan itself, piggybacking on the employees standing out in the heat in the summer and the wind and the rain. So that's your insurance carrier is fine with all those liability issues and walking in between cars? I mention that because you show the ingress for pedestrians through the traffic lanes. So if you're on a bicycle or if you're on any type of handicapped mobility, you have to go through three lanes of traffic to get to the eating area? On top of that, the eating area is next to where all these cars are sitting, idling and exhausting. So I'm sitting here eating my food, yet I'm still sucking in the exhaust from these cars that are just six feet away.
I can address the team member delivery. We wear yellow vests, we train our team, and we do a great job of taking care of our team, whether it's in heat mitigation or it's in cold weather. We provide jackets during the winter months. We have heaters for folks that are outside, and then we rotate people pretty regularly. But that's the perspective of just team care.
Regarding your question of the sidewalk going across, that is providing the access from Ramon Road, we will have signage, both for the pedestrians, letting them know they are going to be entering the drive-through, and then for cars as well, so they have a heads-up that this is an active crosswalk.
Yeah, having a sign and people obeying a sign are two totally different things.
They're two different things, yes, but we want to do everything we can with the site that we have to make it safe for everybody.
And then those eating outside, there's no mitigation from the exhaust fumes while you're sitting there enjoying your lunch?
I think that's where it comes in, trying to have the cars moving as quickly as possible, but you have a point, the cars will be nearby. Looks like just eyeballing it 20 to 30 feet from where they are dining is the outdoor patio.
That is a very windy area, so that car exhaust is going to be blowing all through there. Lastly, you say your statement says it opens at 5:30 a.m. Is that correct?
Restaurant standards are 6:30 in the morning till 10:00 at night.
So Chick-fil-A has... I don't know, I've never eaten at Chick-fil-A. Do they have breakfast, or...
Absolutely. We have a fantastic chicken biscuit, we have burritos, and love to invite you anytime you'd like to come.
That's okay, I'll pass. Thank you.
We do typically apply for 5:30 to 11:00, just to, again, give that operator the maximum flexibility for hours.
No, I was just curious, I didn't know you had breakfast. I was like, who's going there at 5:30 in the morning?
And with regard to the idling cars, we are pretty deliberate, as deliberate as we can be with the site plan, to put the order points, so you see where the menu boards are, as far away from the patio as we can. So the point at which those cars would actually be stopped, having the order taken by a team member, is as far as we can get it away from the patio.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple, sorry. Just a couple quick more questions. The color scheme, is this standard for Chick-fil-A? Is there...
Yes, sir, except with regards to the ledge stone. I believe that was asked to coordinate with the center.
So the white color and the hardware color, those are standard Chick-fil-A colors?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the design, overall design of the building, is that also complying with some corporate standard?
It is fairly prototypical. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the site, the Springs representatives. What are you doing to come in compliance with the city's requirements regarding your landscaping and your trees on your parking lot?
That's something that we are going to be working with our new tenants and then also with an updated landscape plan so that it's cohesive, but we are working on it now. Go ahead.
We had put in some new trees prior to Sprouts opening. I think it was about two months before, and the winds, they were too new, and so we're revising those plans to go with Chick-fil-A's.
And does your tenants separately cut the trees? Is that why some trees are topped and others aren't? Do you have a protocol for how you trim the trees so that you create a canopy?
We will maintain the... all the landscaping that's on the site.
Thank you. With that, I think the hearing is closed. It's before the commission.
I actually have one more for staff question.
Well, that's before the commission, so you can ask that question.
We talked a little bit about traffic issues and comparisons of the existing retail center and the proposed restaurant with drive-through. Has any traffic engineer from the applicant's side chimed in with some sort of impact statement that does a professional comparison of the retail at its square footage size versus the restaurant with drive-through?
When you say "study" versus what the Building I that's there now versus the proposal?
Right, a comparison just to ensure or to acknowledge whether there's a reduction in traffic or an increase in traffic.
Well, we would view a new quick-service restaurant as an intensification of the use, and if that translates into more vehicles visiting the site, I mean, I think that's...
Right. Well, so has that been quantified, I guess, in sort of an impact statement of some sort?
No, there's not been a study provided to the city that provides numbers. Tonight's the first that we've heard of how many to expect.
It seems like that could be relatively easily done. It's not a full-blown traffic study, it's a traffic impact statement of some...
Right, it would be like a traffic letter or something like that.
Yeah. I think that would be the first thing we would want if we really had a concern with the traffic impact.
So going forward, just for comments, I can't make the findings right now that would do an approval without some kind of review as to whether or not we need an addendum for the three lanes of drive-through and also the traffic in the interior traffic in the Springs, because there are issues right now with the interior traffic. We don't know how this is going to... We do know that it's going to intensify it, and we do know that there are problems. I have problems getting from Sprouts over to the bank, always do, and then when I go through those fast-food lanes, it is always difficult. It is difficult getting out onto Ramon from the Springs. So I would like to see whether we need an addendum or what kind of studies staff can give to us before we move forward with this. I would also very much like to see a plan for the... a serious plan from the owner regarding the trees, and not just on this site, but the trees inside the Springs. They clearly don't have a consistent way of trimming them. They clearly don't maintain them. They're empty sites, there are trees that aren't thriving, and I'd like to see a serious plan before we could go forward with this. Are there others? I don't know if anybody else agrees with me that we don't have enough yet.
I would like to piggyback on the Springs because...
I would like to piggyback on the Springs because the stop signs, it's like a thoroughfare when you're going there through lunch. People are zipping through to get over to the eating area. They ignore any stop signs or right-of-way of anyone going towards the stores except to cross over, this has nothing to do with Chick-fil-A. This is just the Springs Center itself, especially on the Home Depot side. That traffic pattern is just, even against the stores in front of Home Depot and Sprouts, people don't stop for pedestrians just walking with kids. Every single day I'm in there, I see that, it's very dangerous. And we need speed bumps or something in there to mitigate the speed of cars flowing through.
I agree, I agree as well that I think we need an addendum to the EIR because of the amount of traffic that's already going through there and then adding this.
And I'm concerned about having three lanes. Clearly, they function with two in another, in a more busy center. But I'd like to know what the impact and whether we need the addendum for that, for this.
And if I might, I would just, whatever the motion looks like, rather than saying the addendum is required, perhaps send it back to staff to work with the experts and the attorneys to see what level of analysis is needed to address these concerns, whether it's an addendum or a scoping letter or other studies that may support it, but we understand the intent.
The other thing I've heard is a concern about the seating area and whether it's really shielded from the wind and the sun and whether that will be adequate as an outside eating area.
Yeah, just to piggyback on the internal traffic. I think, I know in other shopping centers or other fast-food restaurants, the issue which was brought up earlier, that if you're parking against the building where all the ADA spaces are, and there is queuing for the drive-through, it's impossible to either get in or get out. So I think part of this study should really look at the traffic flow patterns in that internal lot. And maybe that one drive aisle is only an exit as opposed to an entrance. But I'll just, that's one comment. The other comment is maybe for ARC, and I just want to go on record to say this. You have two buildings that are mirror images, they're bookends for each other. One of them is being proposed to be demolished. And you're putting in a standard Everywhere America Building Fast Food Restaurant. I think it may be worth ARC looking at whether there's some architectural elements from the existing building that are incorporated into this new building. And whether that's in color, whether it's in materials or architectural elements, I think it's something that really should be looked at.
Do we have any, do we have enough for a motion for you, for staff? Do we need to articulate it more?
I think that we're clear. I just, I do want to give an opportunity for the city attorney, for our attorney, to just ensure that he's comfortable with the discussion that has happened in terms of requiring additional analysis to be determined with staff and our SEQA experts, looking at traffic and other impacts from the original EIR, looking at improvements to the parking lot landscaping to bring the overall site into compliance, and considering more cohesion in the architectural style of the proposed building with the overall development.
We were also looking at the third lane, the drive-through.
Sorry, yes, I missed that.
And also the environmental impacts of the drive-through.
And retention of the palm trees.
And retention of the palm trees.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, what I would suggest, just a quick refinement of what Mr. Hadwin was indicating, that we have a continuance to a date uncertain, because it may take some time for us to analyze this. It may involve an addendum, it may involve some alternative environmental analysis. We would just ask the commission to be open to, you know, what our recommended analysis would be when we come back with that after we conduct it. But we would just continue this to a date uncertain.
Before we do that, I just, I had one note on the staff report. And this was on finding number two, which said encourage the reuse of obsolete commercial properties. Usually when you talk about reuse, you don't talk about destruction and filling up the landfill, you talk about finding ways to reutilize something. So I just, I had a concern because I don't believe that is what's in the general plan and the way this was written. So, and again, it's not a finding, it's a concern that it came out, that it reads that way. But we have a motion, do I have a second? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Under discussion, if I could make a comment. I'm certainly supportive of this continuance to, in order to determine how much study and what needs to be looked at. I just want to remind the commission that maybe temper expectations. A lot of the comments that we made were regarding onsite issues that really can be addressed with condition of approval relating to trees and colors and materials. SEQA is going to look at the project's impacts to off-site essentially. So there may be some limitations in what we can rely on SEQA to do, and the other things can be handled with project conditions.
But I do think we're looking at both, coming back with reports on both. Would you like to call the question? Any other comments?
Matt, and I don't know if this falls outside the scope of the addendum or the potential addendum. But I think in the, over the issue of three lanes versus two lanes versus one lane, I'd like the applicant to, if the data is available, to provide us with some information about the success of this concept of a three-lane merging into two, because we don't really know. And that could be a good thing and mitigate some of the idling vehicle issue. It could also just be a bad thing, and now we have just more capacity and more cars idling. And we don't know that, so, because it is a concept still. So I'd like to somehow fold that feedback loop into our next review.
And I think that the conditions as expressed by the commission are good at giving us that flexibility and actually speak to exactly what Commissioner Miller was talking about, which SEQA will look at one thing, and then I think there's some internal analysis that needs to be done as well, and we'll make sure to address both.
Call the roll, please.
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I recommend a five-minute break before we go into study session?
That would have been the next item. We will take a break for five minutes and then go to a study. We'll adjourn, actually, before we do that, I'm going to adjourn the regular planning commission meeting to the study session. And then we have a five-minute break. It'll be in this room, we couldn't get the other room. For this, what is a, my apologies to our audience, the 7:30 study session. So this is new business. It's a request by MSA Consulting on behalf of EMP2 LLC for a study session to review a proposed subdivision of approximately 22 acres of undeveloped land into six lots for future development within Planning Area 1 of the Ascena Development located at 1,000 North Gene Autry Trail. Before we go there, I just want to say that I live in Ascena, but I live more than 500, is it 500 feet from this area? And that I, because of that, I believe I can take part in the study session. If you guys would come forward, I know you might not want to, but we try and make this a little more informal. We do want all of your comments. And the way we're going to start today since, is that we are going to start with the applicant talking about what they're planning on doing in this area. And then I'm going to open it up to comment. I believe most of the people who are with us are neighbors and may have comments on it. And then it will come to us, we will be free to ask them questions. It's an informal session. We are making no decisions tonight, but it's, it will allow us to make recommendations and comments and concerns known to the developer. Do you want to start?
Madam Chair, and Commissioner's staff as well. Fernando Dutra with SunCal Development, 2646 Dupont Drive in the city of Irvine. First of all, I want to thank everybody for taking time to do this. I know that you have many meetings scheduled, and I want to thank staff for making this happen all this year. Obviously, time is of essence for us. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to present this before you and kind of get your ideas and the neighbors as well. I mean, this is wonderful that the neighbors turned out, and we have, I think, a good relationship with them as well. And so this is really what made us, you know, drive to be here. I want to, so basically what we're doing is we're proposing to subdivide 22-plus acres into six lots, as you mentioned, for future development of a single-family development, residential development units for the requirements of the Planned Development District, PDD. Lots 1 and 2 of the TTM 38998 are for condominium purposes to accommodate a courthouse-style product type consisting of 75 single-family residential units or homes. Lots 1 and 2 will be sold to merchant builders, that's what we do. We're master developers, we package the projects up. We hand to the merchant builders plans that are ready to be developed, tentative maps that are ready to be signed, and then they take it and they develop the product. They put their own product in with the concept that we have gotten approved through you folks. The applications for architecture will come at a future date, or the detailed architecture, if you will. And of course, they'll go through your normal process as well. The total number of units and density complies with the overall approved unit count of the previously approved PDD. We're not asking for any special deviations or amendments. We're following what was previously approved, the standards. The 75-unit courthouse site, which you see before you, which is part of this application, provides for 15-foot private side and 10-foot private rear yards, allowing for active outdoor use, which may be, which may include... We're following what was previously approved, the standards. The 75-unit court home site, which you see before you, which is part of the, this application provides for 15-foot private side and 10-foot private rear yards, allowing for active outdoor use, which may be, which may include private pools, spas, and patio areas as well. Common space, which allows for pocket parks, possible dog park, and additional guest parking as well. Each home will have, of course, a two-car garage with direct access into the home. The single-family residential court homes are compatible with the contiguous lots of the 40 homes currently being built by Toll Brothers. Adjacent proximity to the golf course will also allow for easy pedestrian access to outdoor areas and the community. This application is for the subdivision of 22-plus acres into six condominium lots and for the approval of 75 court home site plans on lots one and two. However, we're considering the design for concepts for lots two and three through six, I should say, which is why this study session has been put together, and this will include two possible concept plans, which I'll present to you as well. At this time, there's no decision, you know, as to the preferred design. We don't have a particular, you know, way that we're leaning. We wanted the flexibility, if you will, to present something to you for consideration. So, having said that, under the court home design, which we really like, is alternative number one. And you can see that on your site plan. What you're looking at right now is the overall site plan. To the right is the application for parcel one and two, which is the 75 lots that are, we're considering as court homes. And to the left are parcels three, four, five, and six that have two alternatives. Alternative one is continuing with the consistent court home type of product that would yield 130 units to be built and sold to home buyers or, you know, through the efforts of the merchant builders we bring in. Possible home sizes provide a proper segmentation of buyer preferences from the single-family residential unit court homes, as well as other single-family residential home offerings and adjacent home sites. As with the 75 court homes in this application, alternative one provides private side yards, private backyards, and a one-acre project amenity site as well for, that can be used for either dog park or some other type of amenity, which we can give for the consideration. Alternative two, if staff doesn't mind putting it up there, this is still alternative one. There we go. Alternative two, which is the higher-density apartment-type of project, and this would be for 348 rent, for rent apartment units. The building type has two-story townhomes at each end of the building with three-story flats in the center to, that would be bifurcating the two townhomes buildings types at the ends. It also includes project amenity outdoor spaces such as pocket parks and guest parking and things of that nature. Whatever design concept is ultimately considered for lots three to six, we will absolutely adhere to the requirements of the current standards under the current PDD. And so, done a little bit of talking and, you know, I want, I'm really here to listen to you and to the neighbors as well, and then take that back and see how we can accommodate it and build the best project possible. That's where our intention is. Madam Chair, that's.
Thank you. Does anybody, before we go to the comments, does anybody have questions?
I have a question. Did we not want to have a staff presentation on this?
Oh.
Yes, poor Edward has prepared a staff presentation. Much of it has been, has been covered already, but perhaps Edward can just go through a little bit of the background.
My apologies.
I thought that Madam Chair decided to give me a vacation tonight, so she knew that I deserved one, so. Anyway, thank you, Madam Chair and member of the Planning Commission. And I thought that Mr. Fernando did a fantastic job. The only area I just want to point your attention to is that, number one, as I mentioned in the staff report, it is not typical and it's not really required by the subdivision map act that when a subdivision is being proposed that we ask for what is going to be the future development on those lots. However, what it says is that when it is, when a parcel is being subdivided, that any future development must be consistent with the requirement of the general plan and the zoning designation at that time. On these, on the six parcels, there is a Planned Development District, PDD 231, that governs the whole of Ascena. And this chart that I have before you is the distribution of land use within Ascena. This particular area is known as Planning Area One. Originally, when PDD 231 was approved in 2003, that area was designated for either resort or high-density and single-family residential development. And here is the distribution on the chart, right here. So on these very, on that very parcel, it calls for, on the, on the lots one and two, it calls for a mixture of single-family development or condominiums. And then on the, on the, on lots three through six, it calls for a higher, a much more higher density development. And if you look at the columns to the right, it also talked about the number of possible units, the estimated units, and the maximum units. On both sides, what the applicant is proposing is actually less than what the estimate and the maximum requirements are. So is the density. The two proposals are conforming to the Ascena development standard. So those are the only areas that I want to point out. I think the chair, the chair said, did talk about the ground rules for study session. Tonight, you are not to make a decision, just make comments and give directions to the applicant. If there is a difference of what you want to see there or the type of development that missed your expectation, but at the same time, that is consistent with the Planned Development District, yeah, you have to make those known to the applicant. One thing I do want to lay emphasis upon again is that the applicant is not asking for any deviation from, from the PDD. They're not asking for any amendment, at least at this point. So that's all I just want to point out. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Yeah. So when this was potentially a resort hotel, a village, what was the height, what was the, what was the height, maximum height?
The maximum height would have been consistent with that of R3, so up to, actually, it would have allowed up to 40 feet in height.
Up to 40 feet in height?
Yeah. But also in the development guideline, it did say that in the case, for whatever reasons, that a resort hotel is not developed, that the, there will be alternatives which will include multifamily development or high-density development in that same area, in Planning Area One.
Okay. All right. So there was nothing that said you had to build a resort hotel? It was either or, some sort of?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. All right. And the other questions I have are for the applicants, so I'll wait. Thank you.
The, the other question I had was, the airport has standards, I'm assuming that this, the height limits on this went in before the airport limitations?
Yes, it is, and.
And so that they're exempt from the airport limitations in terms of height?
Correct.
I, I have a couple of questions for the applicant before we had public testimony. I think I'd like to do that because I think it brings out a little more of what you're doing. What you're proposing in part of this is single-family homes.
Correct.
Or fee simple, single-family homes.
Correct.
And so that, that if we used option one, it would, they would become, in your thought, part of the HOA?
Yes.
Okay. I think.
I think it would be too difficult to bifurcate HOAs, given all of the commonality and all the common landscaping, things of that nature. So we've considered a sub-HOA at one time, and that may have further discussion about that, but yeah.
And if there was a, if you used option two, what would, what kind of governance structure would you have for that?
There would still have to be an HOA overriding the, the common areas, if you will. So it'd still have to have that. But once again, I think it would be, it, it's to the benefit of the entire community, I think, to fall into one HOA, just given to all of the common areas and, you know, how do you do all the math and bifurcate all the common landscaping and things of that nature? I think it would be too complicated, but.
So on that note, how does it work down the road for lot five? If it were to be developed into rental apartments, how does that, how does, I would think if you're in the HOA, you wouldn't want rental apartments because they're not going to contribute to the HOA, but they're also utilizing the infrastructure. So how, how does that work?
So you would set up a MASH developer budget, if you will, that the MASH developer would contribute out of the, say, revenues, if you will, towards some percentage of the impacts from the apartments. Yep. Makes it more complicated, but that, that's what you would do.
Has the community weighed in?
We're, we're doing that right now.
They're coming too.
So that's possibly.
I feel the weight already.
That's possibly the segue, if people would come up and introduce yourselves.
Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So in the court house, the court scheme, what's the typical lot size? I mean, how much, what are we talking about? You addressed the yards, but, I mean, from front to back?
Roughly 4,500 square feet.
I'm sorry?
Roughly 4,500 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, okay.
Which still allows for the 15-foot side yards and rear yard as well. We wanted to make the lot substantial enough to accommodate a pool, or at least a small pool, if you will.
Right.
And I think you can see that on the, on the.
Yeah, no.
Side plan, yeah.
That's great. You know, my concern has to do with the three-foot setback from, from the street to the garage door. And I know there's some exceptions to that, but, but that's a lot of house, a lot of garages, you know? You've got 31 feet between houses, and that's a lot of garage, and I'm assuming they're two-story, and you've got a lot of bedroom windows looking at each other. So I think there's, yeah, that's why I'm concerned about the depth of the, of the property, not so much the width of each.
At this point, just get, get your question answered.
Oh, sorry. Well, I did get my question answered. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. Then the rest are comments. I'll wait.
If members of the public would come up and introduce themselves?
I know we had folks sign up, but this is a little more informal, so we'll let you go first, Rich.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners' staff, my name is Rich Gordon, and I am president of the Ascena HOA Board. I want to be clear, the comments I'm going to make are not reflective of our board. We have not had a formal meeting to make any decision relative to this proposal. But I, what I wanted to do tonight in the study session was to bring to your attention what we think are a couple of issues that will need to be addressed moving forward. But first, let me say that we've understood all along that the planned development for Ascena called for this area to be of higher density. And I believe that many in our community support more housing in our community and more housing options. So our concerns really are how do we make this fit within a community that is currently 542 single-family for-sale homes? And soon we'll be adding another, about 150 for-sale homes that will be developed in the next couple of years, and another area with another 100 single-family homes that is under development or will be under development. One of the dynamics here is that there are only two entrances and exits from this community, or from this area. One off of Vista Chino, which is currently not gated, and one off of Artisan Way, which is gated. And currently, we are a gated community. So one of the things that will be necessary for us is to make sure that there's some kind of a gated situation into this area off of Vista Chino, to make sure that, that we can keep the integrity of the, of the community. And the other dynamic would be that, given that there, this is a slightly different model and that there may be different community amenities, currently, we're a community that doesn't have any real community amenities. An HOA without a swimming pool, without tennis courts, without a golf course, we only have a dog park as our amenity. If there are to be particularly common amenities, a swimming pool, other aspects of this as this moves forward, one of the things that will be important to us is that we, a sub-association be created to keep the liability and issues related to this part of the community within that community and not fall back on the balance of the residents and the members of our association. You may hear from others tonight about other issues and concerns, but I think as far as we're concerned, those are two issues that our board will be looking at very closely, the maintain, maintenance of a gated community, and secondly, whether or not we need a sub-association so that the master association has some level of protection relative to this development.
Can I ask a quick, I'm sorry.
No, this is your meeting.
I think no. Let's hear from the public.
All right. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for putting together this study session. We appreciate having input. My name is Tim Mathias. I'm also on the board. However, like Rich, this, these are my opinions tonight. Our board hasn't discussed any of this. I actually live in what's part, was originally part of the resort village, just off of that Vista Chino circle. Today, it's known as Vermillion. And one of my concerns has to do with the traffic, and I know everyone's going to say, well, this was approved and we can't do a traffic study, we can't look at traffic, but it's going to create a problem, and I think going into it blindly is a mistake on my, I think it's a mistake. So currently, coming out of Vermillion, I, I exit there every day, go out onto Vista Chino and head south or west towards Palm Springs. And recently, they've changed the light there where it is more reactive, it, it changes more quickly, but there is at least twice a day when the traffic is backed up from Gene Autry to that light and beyond, bumper to bumper. And when the light changes, providing somebody hasn't already snuck into the intersection, you might get one or two cars out onto Vista Chino if you're heading in that direction. So imagine that with all this other density here, what a problem that's going to create going around, around about. Because if you get eight cars in line heading out to go, go in that direction, what you've effectively done is you've blocked off the gates for Vermillion. So when my exit gate opens up, there's going to be a car there. I won't be able to get out. You, excuse me, you've blocked off the entrance to the golf course, so patrons won't be able to get to the golf course because that'll be blocked. And so, again, everyone says there's nothing, we're not allowed to look at this, but I think somebody needs to look at this. Yes, they can go through the other Gene Autry, or the Artisan Gate exit and get out, but even with, even with that, that's still, we're talking about a lot of density there. The other thing people say is, well, you know, this is a zone for high density, we have to do high density. Well, I, I, my understanding is we don't have to do high density. We could do lower density if the developer would choose to do lower density. That's a choice they need to make. And I know for their, in terms of what they can generate, you know, money-wise, it's probably the more density, the better for them. But I do know from talking with Toll that they would love to have lot one there as single-family homes and tag right on to their current NOLA project, which is right there, and just continue with single-family homes, thereby we wouldn't, at least it would reduce the density. So I think traffic is an issue that needs to be considered. So, you talk about later on about the Acesina Design Guidelines and things like that. Until this is annexed in, none of that means anything. And, you know, Fernando indicated that they do intend to do that. My request would be that they do that sooner than later. Because we have a situation now where NOLA, the Toll Brothers, that wasn't annexed in either, and now they're halfway through their building, and they're having to annex it in piecemeal. The Cathedral City lots that are being developed haven't been annexed in, and there's issues there with access, because they're basically landlocked. So, by not annexing these things in, it creates a real problem for us. And, and there's nothing to say that, like they did the Cathedral City lots, they did the track maps, and then sold it off to a developer, and they haven't annexed it yet. So, what I would like to say is that if they do the track map here, that at the same time, they annex it in, so that, otherwise, how do we know that the next person is going to do it or not? Rich brought up the gate issue. I think that's important. And the other thing is the, well, it's important for us, I think, to have the, again, again, the annexation will take care of it. It's, it's, you know, we, we need to be able to coordinate a new gate that goes in there over lots S and T that will, which aren't shown on your, they're not labeled on your map, but they're right there off of the Vista Chino circle. If there's a gate installed there, it's important that that gate work with all the other gates in Acesina. And so, it's important that that eventually get turned over, like all the other gates are going to get turned over. But again, until this is all annexed in, you know, it's a big question mark on our end, what's, what's really going to happen here?
Hello, my name's Connie Bigby, Commissioners, Adam Neber. I've lived in Acesina for, my husband and I have lived there for 15 years. We've known that this development would take a while to come to fruition, and we're hoping to live long enough to see it. So, I agree with everything that's been said. I'm particular about, yes, we need a gate off of the Vista Chino circle to annex lots 1 and 2, and potentially 3 through 6, to maintain the integrity of our community. I also agree with Mr. Gordon about if 3 through 6 are developed with this high-density option, and they have other community amenities, that that definitely needs to be put into a sub-association so that it doesn't affect the rest of the community. Personally, I totally oppose this option for lots 3 through 6 with the higher density and apartments. I don't think it goes with our community at all, and it is going to create, Tim is right about the traffic, and it's going to be equally bad off, out of the Artisan Gate onto Gene Autry. That often gets backed up quite a bit also, and you sometimes can't make a right turn out of there. But Vista Chino would be especially bad with that amount of density. I am not opposed at all to the other option, which would have the 75 units on lots 1 and 2, and then I think it was 130 units for 3 through 6. I think that's, it's higher density than the rest of the community, and I think that that's fine. But I certainly, yes, that one, I think would be fine. And I think it would, it would be a good addition to our community. So, I think those are really all my comments. I think you guys pretty much took care of it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ellen Torina, and I've been an Acesina owner for the last 13 years. I agree with everything that everybody has said. I'll stand up here as a representative, not from the HOA Board, but just a regular community member. Yes, agree with everything that everybody has said, the same concerns that everybody has. I totally agree with Connie that this is the view that we should have. There, Toll Brothers is starting another group of homes in that area at the bottom there, and then I believe that there are two other large lots along Gene Autry that are going to be developed as single-family homes. And once that's done, that, that's our community. And that picture, as we see it, would blend in, and that's, you know, make it a consistent community from beginning to end, and I think would just, would really make Acesina the best possible place. Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else wish to speak? With, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Commission for comments. Starting with Commissioner Morrow, you just go across.
Yeah, I had just a question for the applicant. The denser, the denser option with the apartments, I assume those are all parking garages on the first floor? All those little boxes? It's hard to tell. But that's a lot of garage doors. I was wondering if you looked at, did you look at other options for parking than individual garages for every unit?
Smart architect, take a look at the best options, and we've done a lot of work with Danilian. And, you know, to be, to be frank, what we also did is we looked at which one of these would be the most efficient, if you will, from a land planning perspective, which was the purpose of really getting the higher density here. And so, this was the extent of the study that we did for the garages.
Yeah, I wondered if there might be another solution, or, I wondered why you didn't do more of a garden-style apartment complex with a little more open space and pathways and...
Well, as I said, we, we thought we would propose something and then work towards, you know, whatever options came available with, with your ideas. And so, we're, we're happy to go back and study the garden style as well. Once again, the, you know, the, the function of this exercise for us was, okay, we have the option of, of building 130 court homes, which we happen to like the land plan, we happen to like the product, we think that it's, you know, it's representative of the community, we thought this is a really, really cool plan. And then we also want to look at how much density can we get into a land plan as another option as well. And I've done garden-style apartments. I appreciate the fact that with garden-style apartments, you do have a little bit more paseos, if you will, that connect the communities. We just, you know, and we can go back and study that as well.
And lastly, do you need those two cul-de-sacs? I noticed you preserve them, but couldn't you just get rid of those?
Taking a note. Let's see here.
Can you point out what you're referring to in cul-de-sacs?
When you drive in off of Vista Chino, there's a circular paved area.
Are you referring to that area immediately to the right as you drive in?
Yeah, as you drive in.
You go right, and then you go dogleg left, and then there's an immediate, the two dead ends there?
Yeah, couldn't you just do a T-intersection? It has a circular.
I think those are built out.
Oh, they're already there?
Those, those are already there. If you're talking about the circular entry.
Yeah, the circular.
That's there, and, and the, the little leg with the circle is already there.
Yeah, the one further north. But those couldn't be decommissioned? Create more green space? Or you don't think?
Have you been, have you been in, have you driven in and looked at it?
No, it's, it's, I don't think it makes much difference.
No.
Okay. All right, that was it.
Thank you.
Robert?
Yeah, on the apartment scheme, you said there's three levels of flats. So, does that, are they elevator buildings then? Is it, you have a, you have an apartment on each of three stories?
Correct, correct.
So, you, each one of those is an elevator building?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you have, are you providing one covered space? Again, this is all hypothetical, I understand.
Sure.
One covered space for each unit, and then one in the under?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Just some, well, I'll, I can save it for comments, but just specifically to lots 1 and 2, providing you some comments, the dog park between, where it's located between two units, seems like a wrong place for it. And that's right off of the first circle. I think you need better distribution of guest parking, particularly if you have no driveways in front of the houses, and there's no street parking. It seems like there's quite a bit of distance from some guest parking to where the units actually are. The, I think, on the apartment scheme, again, well, no, going back to alternative 1, when you look at the overall, just white versus yellow or green, you have a whole lot more driving than you have anything else. The proportions, as you just look at that as a graphic element, you, there's a lot more pavement than there is actually house or yard. And so, I think maybe you want to rethink that, the way it circulates, so that you can pick up a little more green, and maybe you reduce some of the numbers of units. But, but just from a visual, it looks like you've got a lot of street.
Commissioner Rotman, if you don't mind, I'm looking at that picture up on the, on the screen.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at mine. The, I think, I understand what you're saying, although when I look at my 8 and 1/2 by 11 here, 12, 11 I should say, or 14, there's a lot of green between the units and on the end, so I'm happy to share this with you.
Well, I'm on alternate 1, right? And there, it seems like in lots 1 and 2, there's, there seems to be a lot more green, and it just may be the way, the way the streets are laid out.
Yes.
But 3 through 6?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, 3 through 6.
You were comparing 3 through 6 to 1 and 2?
Yes, I'm sorry, I wasn't, didn't make that clear. And I know you've got this great green space, you know, common, you know, amenity area, but even from a heat sink island, and, you know, it's just, it just seems like you want to minimize the amount of pavement and maximize the amount of green space, or yard, or whatever you want to call it.
Okay.
All right. I, I mentioned earlier concern about the number of garage doors being three feet away from the curb, how you deal with houses that are 31 feet apart. I think those are real concerns, especially when you get this dense. So, again, you may want to take a look at, maybe reduce your density a little bit, maybe give a little bit more space between front of house to front of house. On the apartment scheme, again, it was brought up by another Commissioner about all the garages. I think it's really not a nice experience to drive through. I, it'd be great to look at more of a garden-style apartment complex, and, and, yeah, that's about it. I, I'm not opposed to density. And at first, I thought, you know, the apartments would be a nice addition. I do have a question, when you have Lot 5, which has got all the amenities, is the idea that each lot would be sold to a different developer?
No, the idea would be that preferably, we'd like to set it to one person.
Okay.
To one, one developer. Makes it so much easier to manage, and that's what our preference would be.
Because Lot 5, whoever did that, if it was separate, would have the short shrift of that.
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
So, so just to be clear, the, the apartments would be sold, or the, you know, lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, in essence, would be sold to 1, and then 2, and 1 and 2 could be sold separately, though.
Okay. And, and I know there's no easy solution to this, but having all those units facing, backing up to both Vista Chino and Gene Autry, which is state highway, I think, you know, I, I don't have a suggestion of how you deal with that, but it, it just, it's, it's not healthy, so.
Of course, those are the back of the units.
I understand, but that's recreational area for the units, right?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Backing up to a major.
Right.
It's a land plan.
I understand, I understand.
You know, challenge, to say the least.
Yeah. Maybe there's a wider green belt buffering it, I don't know.
And that is kind of a, a pretty good distance between the back of curb and the unit. I think there must be at least over 20 feet there. So, between the, the curb to the, to the wall, and then the wall to the unit itself, you may have 35 feet. So, but we'll check that. I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you.
Noise and vibration and everything else.
Madam Chair, can I, can I maybe just make a couple of comments?
Yes.
Just, it might influence some of the conversation, just for some context, so, and also to respond to some of the comments that were made by the public. I think it's important to keep in mind that when this was entitled, we applied the R4 Development Standards here, and this is high-density residential. So, they, the, the, the developer is actually obligated to meet a minimum density for these parcels of 15 units an acre up to 30 units an acre, and they are required to do some version of multifamily housing. So, that, that has been established in the original entitlements. That is what the general plan says, and that is what the zoning requires. In addition, I would point out that we do have the RENA allocations as established in the housing element, which have made certain assumptions about density here. So, I just, to sort of respond to some of the public comments and sort of the comments you're giving, we do need to look at higher-density development here. That is what is required by both the state and our own regulations.
Okay, well, with that in mind, does option 1 with 130 court-style homes meet that requirement?
I don't know that we've done that level of analysis for a study session, but I would suggest that it may be a little bit low.
Okay. I mean, the only, as I've listened to the discussion, I think the, the thing that strikes me is that with the alternative 2, I mean, even with alternative 1, there's just going to be a lot of traffic getting into and out of Vista Chino. There already is without these homes. So, I don't know, you don't have an answer for it, but I could see where that's going to be a problem for the residents that are living there and trying to come and go. And so, I, I guess I share the opinion, you know, that alternate 1, now we're told it may not actually meet requirements, but alternate...
And if I might weigh on on that as well, I think it's important to remember that this went through a full entitlement process that assumed a higher density here than is shown on, on alternate 1. And so, I can't speak to the actual experience of that traffic circle, and it may be that we need to look at, at some revisions to that, that intersection, the signal timing at Vista Chino. But the traffic analysis was already done, assuming the level of density that is being contemplated here.
Just, just as a comment to what Chris is saying, Vermillion, which is now larger lot, single-family homes, were originally in this higher density, as was the Toll Brothers lots, and both of those got approved by the city at some point in time and allowed a lower density and build-out. So, I don't know what the process was that allowed, actually, I should know it because I sat on the commission, I think, when both of those happened. But both of those were allowed to be built out at a lower density.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that was an amendment to the PDD, and I recall you, or the Commissioner.
And so, it is possible to have an amendment to the PDD that would allow us to do that. So, I don't know that we are, we, we absolutely have to look at this as required higher density.
I would advise you, though, under state law, under RENA, we would have to offset the decrease in density here by upzoning another site, and that would be the planning Commission's obligation in doing that.
Okay. And we didn't have to do that in the past.
Because it wouldn't have been likely identified as a housing opportunity, as a housing site through that RENA allocation at that time, but it is currently.
We do have some other areas of the city that could be potentially upzoned, and that are going through planning right now.
As planning director, I would say that we actually don't. In fact, we are deficient in our housing sites. In fact, we are deficient in our housing sites and we don't have alternate sites.
Okay, keep going.
So, that, that's my, my comment about traffic. So, I would say that some kind of traffic report has to be accompanied this so that something gets built. Well, I mean, you have to.
I just want to caution that we cannot require a traffic study when one has already been done unless there's nexus to do so through the entitlement process.
Has that traffic report been done counting 348 homes?
It assumed the density here for the R4 density that was done, yes, it has been done.
660 units.
And the traffic right now is having trouble getting, the residents are having trouble getting onto Vistacino. Yeah.
We do have to follow applicable state law, and there is not a law here that allows us to require a traffic study.
Yeah, because the density proposed is less than what was studied under the EIR. Are you finished?
I'm done.
Okay. If I could ask, probably these are mainly for staff, I think. Edward, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit. Could you, yeah, this chart. So, this condominiums apartments line was dealing with 34 acres at the time. This is now 22 acres, is that correct? So, we can't really look at this as the numbers.
So, that is correct. So, the entirety of these six lots is 22-plus acres.
Right. So, when I multiply 22 times 15, the low end of the density, we come to 330 units. At 22 times 30 units per acre, at the high end of the R4 density, it's 660. Alternative one is 75 court homes plus 130 on the low density for three, four, five and six. That only comes to 205. That's 62% of the minimum density that was allotted and would meet the minimum density. So, alternative one doesn't work to meet the minimum densities. And I'm glad that staff brought it up, I'm, you know, they would have had to have. We, we are constantly being told by the state, we must increase density. We're, we're turning potentially, single-family homes into four units without any, without any reason to say no. And so, this is a brand-new development and we can't be downzoning it to less density. I, I mean, I think, you know, you need to look at a minimum of 330 units across these six lots. And I don't think there's any way feasible for us to get around that that makes sense and that doesn't jeopardize another part of the city.
Was any consideration given to doing a single attached-wall townhome-style developments?
You mean, an attached-wall?
Like the garages are?
Sure, yeah, townhome.
Yeah.
We, we have several concepts for that. We felt that, you know, the, the community would appreciate a lesser-dense type of product with more landscaping and more, you know, space, if you will.
I was just looking, but trying to find.
No, I agree.
A medium between one and two.
Happy to come back with that kind of product as an option as well, to meet the, you know, to, to increase the density, if that's what we ultimately, you know, determined. But we have plenty of product that we can put together, that we've built, that's attached townhome product.
And a question on the gated.
And maybe it's a blend, by the way?
Yeah.
Of both. You know, maybe it's a blend of both throughout the entire project.
Something similar like Soul, where they're, those lots are much closer together. But in terms of the gated community aspect, I golf at Ascena often, and so I do use that roundabout coming in off of Vistacino. But where would the gate go, right where the red line is? I'm confused.
That'd be the best place for it, that way you have enough. What we'll do is we do a little bit of a study. We want enough of an area to back up cars, right? To stack cars, if you will. But that's roughly where it would be. We want the stacking plan also to be included.
And I will echo, it is a, it is problematic making a left turn out of the, onto Vistacino during rush hour, because all the cars coming Cathedral City going to Palm Springs, that is often backed up, especially in the mornings.
The.
I got a question to follow up on that.
I'm done, that was it.
I got a question, kind of following up on what Commissioner Baker was talking about and what's come up before about the access. Is there no way to get another exit, at least, out of the, for instance, lots three through six? Is there not a way to propose an exit out to Gene Autry that would help alleviate some of the, some of the maneuvers out of Vermilion at Vistacino?
That, that's a.
And exit only?
That's a Caltrans issue and, and Gene Autry is a Caltrans road. And we've had years working with them on just signaling the front entry. It, it is not, it is not easy to, and I, staff has a better view on that than I do, but I think.
Set it.
I think, I think cutting an exit, it would be really difficult. And you couldn't do it on Vistacino because the traffic's going in the wrong direction, unless we only want to attract people who live in Cathedral City. But the, for the community, in terms of what the community is like, option one, irrespective of the, the obligations we have with RENA, is a much better alternate. It matches, it, it creates smaller homes, but matches what is in the community and would fit in, would fit in very nicely. So, if there's any, any, and the, I mentioned the airport because height, although we may be exempt from height, height with the airport can be an issue in terms of safety with landing and planes landing and planes taking off. And your, it's your opinion that we don't have to go, we wouldn't have, they wouldn't have to go through the airport for approvals?
No, they will be required to go back to ALLOC. So, they will review the, the proposal. But as I mentioned earlier, when the MND was adopted in 2004, they already did, and that was part of the analysis and they approved it at that time. However, if there are any changes to any new proposal, they will have to go back to the Airport Land Use Commission, the ALLOC, for review.
I would also note, one of the interesting things about the ALLOC plan is, certainly it is concerned about height, but I don't think we're talking about the types of heights in Palm Springs that are in conflict with the ALLOC plan. They also regulate density. And in the zones around the airport, they want higher-density uses because they tend to have more sound attenuation and they tend to, more than a single-family home, be responsive to the noise that an airport generates. So, we run into this issue in a lot of the sites around the airport, where you either need no development or you need high-density development because of the ALLOC rules. So, it seems a little counterintuitive that they want more intensity of use around the airport, but it's actually because of the form of construction that usually comes along with higher-density uses.
The, the other question, and this is just one, there's, I know it sort of is lot F, but this is kind of the wash. What will happen to that strip of land that goes from Vistacino and goes into, into but isn't part of the golf course?
Right beside lots one and two?
It's beside lots one and two and next to the circle. Lot T and?
Lot S.
Lot F?
S.
S.
Lot T was originally supposed.
Oh, no, it's fine. I, I actually would ask if you have comments to join in.
Lot T was originally done, when New Valley was there, to be turned over.
You can stand up and speak into the mic.
Normally, we're in a better room for this, but I might actually bring this down and that way you all can pass it around.
You can come up.
I can come up.
Yeah.
This is also here. Yeah, I'll come up. So, on either side there, on the lower part, that's, that's lot T. It's not labeled on this map, but that's lot T. And above is lot S. And those assume, we assume those someday will become part of the association. We get turned over probably at the same time that the circle gets turned over, which hasn't been turned over yet. So, lot T was originally promised to the association by New Valley, when they, the previous declarant. And we were going to put a dog park on there, because there is no dog parks at this end of the, at this end. So, but that didn't happen. It never got turned over. So, that's, that's where that stands today. The little, the little part that's kind of outlined in black up there, that's between S and the Vermilion circle, that's owned by the Water District. It's, it's flat area, it's gated, I don't, I don't know what it is.
Or, or pumps. If we were doing lots one and two in the configuration that you're suggesting, I think some of the park lot areas, especially what's identified as the dog park, doesn't work very well where it is. But the, the concentration on the apartment section, the flow of that doesn't, you know, it's, I don't know if we could end up with something that's more appealing on option two.
Madam Chair, was a comment relative to alternative one, dog park does not work where it's located, is that?
It's just, it's in between two houses. And our experience is when you put a dog park, especially in a small sliver between two houses and the dog parks, both neighbors object.
That's on lot two.
Yes. Yeah, I see it.
But, but as a pocket park where people might stop and use it, it works beautifully.
It's the park at the north end in lot two? Is that just a small park?
It's a little hard to.
Right there.
The one at the, at Vistacino?
It's, it's right off of the circle.
It's, it's the one right there.
Yeah, sorry, I'm asking what the triangular park north of that is.
There's a view park below, which is.
That's a pocket park.
Which is nice and there's parking in front of it. And that gives a golf course view and that would be a nice, a nice and very usable park for the, for the community.
You're talking about the park down that borders the, the golf course?
Yeah.
Okay.
There may not be space in this for a dog park in, in lots one and two unless you use the little section that's up against Vistacino.
Right. I can see that.
But how you put 300, it would be 300 homes in this is an interesting challenge. It's, well, no, it's also, it's also the land planning. In conformity with the Ascena development, there are a lot of pocket, pocket parks that people use in the neighborhoods that provide some relief, given that there aren't other amenities.
Well, we can certainly go back and look at other product that, you know, maybe it's a blend of attached townhomes that will yield a higher, higher density with the mixture of the cluster, which is less. So, I've done attached townhomes that are at 17 to the acre. And, and this is nine to the acre, if you will, the cluster is. And I've done attached townhome that worked really nice, you know, a good-looking product as well. And depending on how it's, the orientation of the, of the attached townhomes, you know, but we can go back and, and look at that.
The, the other thing is that you still have the associate, the single families fit easily into the association. The attached townhomes, which would require, I believe, a sub-association maintaining them, would have to be in a sub-association.
Correct.
Because of the, of the fees, so that they can't necessarily be mixed or, or, they could be mixed together, but it would require, if they're mixed, it would require a sub-association to handle, to handle that. And so, there's.
We're finding some challenges.
Yeah, challenges.
Yeah.
This, Chris, a question for you. Most of Vistacino is signalized to, not in the least to allow exits out of Ascena, but is signalized to allow the maximum traffic flow in, into Cathedral City. Is, is it possible that that ever can be re-signalized so that traffic can flow out?
Unfortunately, our, our engineering colleague is left, but I have to imagine that as additional density comes online here, we would make adjustments to the network and to the signals to account for that. So, we can certainly look into that with the engineer in terms of what's necessary to inform that. Without calling it necessarily a traffic study, I think there would be some data or analysis that would go into supporting that, that we would coordinate with the applicant on once there's a development plan. Because it would, you know, those houses aren't there now, so it would need to account for what ultimately gets developed.
The experience, I believe, of going out of the Artisan Gate and into the Artisan Gate is fairly good. I think the thing that makes it difficult is when Gene Autry gets backed up at Vistacino, rather than whether or not you can, the way the curb cuts are, you can easily maneuver out, but you may get backed up. And that's been reworked many times.
You mean, get backed up on, on Gene Autry?
Getting backed up on Gene Autry, yeah. And I guess the last question for you is you don't, the exterior would clearly be part of this in terms of whoever buys it, their obligations. What happens with Artisan Way? Is that going to be developed in advance of this and turned, and turned over?
You mean, the, the street?
The street, and the street and the street and the landscape on both sides of the street.
So, we're currently looking to turn over as much of the existing landscaping to, to the HOA. Artisan Way, given the fact that there is going to be construction, you know, if you will, for a long time, that's a discussion we can have, whether or not it's appropriate to turn that over. And you have paving issues, right? If we're, there'll be an impact relative to the paving because of the construction traffic. There'll be landscaping impacts as well, so we're happy to sit down with the, with the HOA and discuss how we're dealing with that. And, you know, we have those two other sites that are contiguous as well that need to be developed. Maybe this is one that doesn't necessarily get turned over immediately because of the impacts you're going to have, both to the paving as well as landscaping.
Thank you. Any last comments? I think, yes, of course.
My name's William Carlton, and I'm an Acesina neighbor too, and like all my neighbors at Acesina, I very much prefer option one, but listening to Commissioner Miller's question and some of the staff comments about density that's required, I just, I just wonder, I'm not, I'm not good at doing math in my head, and I'm not saying I'm advocating for this, but I just have a question. What does proposal one look like, a variation of proposal one where lots one and two look more like lots three, four, five, and six? In other words, don't go to the, don't automatically assume that we're going into option two or the townhomes, but isn't some density being lost in one and two on proposal one that could leverage the three, four, five, six idea?
If you, Chris, am I correct that if you built out one and two to the, to what we're looking at right now, there'd have to be more density in three, four, five, and six?
Yeah, I, I think that we would have potentially some flexibility to average the density out over the planning area. So, I mean, there's different ways of cutting it, right? You do something that's kind of middle ground 15 across the whole planning area, or you transition the density towards Gene Autry, which inherent concerns about consistency with the existing, existing development is probably something I would consider, and I think what option two is looking at. But there's different ways of cutting it. So yes, as proposed, you know, it looks like in this plan, we're averaging 10.3 units an acre. Potentially, it's a little bit denser on the three to six side than it is the one and two, so you'd probably have to up, in this scenario, three to six to get to that 15 Again, there's different ways of getting creative on it.
Go back and study it.
With that, I think we, unless, if you have comments, please.
Just push the little button, yeah.
Is that on? Yes, oh, gosh. My, my only comment is, and, and, I think the thing that I disliked the most was three through six being apartments. We, I feel like Acesina should be a community of units that are for sale and owned. And I wouldn't mind seeing some, you know, something slightly denser, like attached units, to make that happen. But I don't think apartments fit in with the community at all. And I, I agree that if, if they are going to be attached units, then it has to be a sub-association, because you have to deal with, if you're selling attached condominiums and you've got common maintenance on those buildings and things like that, it would definitely have to be a, a sub-association. I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think, I think we should try to keep the density down to as, as little as we can get just because of the, the traffic problems we're going to cause. But I would really like to see the rest of our community be for-sale properties that conform with the rest of the community. That's all.
I just want to go back a little bit to the traffic thing on, on Vistachino. One of the things that happens is the traffic backs up, and the turn lane on Vistachino to turn onto Gene Autry and head south, a lot of times, there's only two or three cars in that turn lane because all the other cars have backed up and blocked it off, so, so that people who want to, excuse me, so people who want to turn can't even get into the turn lane. So maybe, and I don't know, I mean, maybe if the turn lane were extended longer, some of those cars that are, are in the, in the lane could actually get into the turn lane, and that would alleviate some of the backup that happens there. The other thing is, it's just a comment on my part, that it seems, and I know the world is not fair, but it seems unfair that, that when all, this is all approved 20 years ago, and, and at that time, I'm sure it all made sense, and then fast forward 20 years later, and things have changed, and we're not allowed to consider what's happened in the meantime, and we're stuck with our hands tied on, on what's obviously not the same situation as it was 20 years ago when it comes to the traffic and stuff. And I just would like to be clear, or have a clarification, that even if SunCal and, and the association wanted to, we came to an agreement, and we wanted to implement what's up on the screen right now, what you're telling me is that there's no way we can do that. We can't do an amendment. We can't do anything. Even if the two of us agree to it, that cannot be done. Is that, is that true? Is that correct?
I guess to respond to that, I would say other things have changed in 20 years as well, including the need for housing in our city. And I think that our city, city council has established a policy that is supportive of, of diversifying our housing stock, creating more affordable housing typologies, and creating more higher-density types of housing, because we have very limited developable land left in the city to accommodate the housing that we need to meet state law. So we, the objective that has been given to the planning department by our city council is to look at increasing density and development throughout the city. So is it impossible? No. But under state law, we would have to, to, to take away density that has been established on any site in the city, we have to upzone another site. So the question I would ask is, if you don't think it's fair here, where do you think it is fair? Whose property is it fair to put that density on? And this was contemplated for high-density development at the time that the city council approved this development, and so you're, you're essentially asking that we kick the problem to someone else's part of the city.
With all due respect, I'm not. I mean, the, the, the thing that, that has changed from my perspective is the traffic. And I don't, I'm not opposed to necessarily higher density if the traffic can be handled. I, I, I'm not opposed to higher density. It's just, it's the combination, but the traffic that's there today versus 20 years ago and the higher density.
So we would need to find an alternate site and upzone that in order to take density away from here. And based on arena allocation through 2029, we have no sites available, and we are already looking ahead to the next housing cycle and knowing that we are going to have to upzone other sites already throughout the city for more density. So we are not, as a department, in a position to recommend taking density off of any site in the city.
What Chris is saying is state law has changed.
Yes, yes.
It's not, it's not...
It's not in our control.
He's not, I think he's saying he's feeling the pressure of state law.
Yes, thank you. That's a, a better way to put it, is, is, it's, our hands are, are entirely tied here in every city in California.
With that, I'm going to adjourn. I want to thank everybody for participating in this, and I'm going to adjourn until, oh my goodness, next year.
Madam Chair, if I could, if I may, I want to thank, I want to thank everybody for the very well-thought-out ideas and, and comments, you know, I appreciate that. I made two pages of notes that I'll share with staff. I'm a note taker. Hopefully, I got it right, and I appreciate Chris's comments. You know, my night job is that I'm a city councilman in my own city, and having sat in your position for eight years, you know, it, it's difficult when the state mandates that you have to do certain things, and you know, it, it's not one size fits, fits all, right? Especially when it comes to our, our cities, now we care about our cities. So I can appreciate the position you're in. I hear that you like the, you know, the lower-density product that we're proposing here, but you also, we also have an issue relative to density, and so we, we need to come up with a, a balance, if you will, that's going to make sense, and I'm, I'm confident they're working with staff. They're motivated to do the right thing, as we are as well, so, which is why we proposed alternative number one. We really liked it as well. So we'll have to work a little harder to come up with a blend, if you will. So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
So Madam Chair, the, the map itself will be coming before you most likely in the next public hearing, public hearing meeting, just the map itself.
Thank you.
Followed by development plans at a future date.
And I left out planning commission reports, requests, and comments.
Anita was reminding me. I have no comments. Well, actually, I do have one, but it's you all first.
What, my only comment will be that Chris and I will figure out the holiday party in, before, before the next meeting in January.
Yes, we'll poll, poll the audience on availability.
Planning directors' report.
The update that I had is that you all considered the fulfillment center north of I-10 at your last special meeting last week. We have received an appeal of that to the city council, so that, we have 45 days per the municipal code to schedule that for hearing before the city council. Holiday calendars, agendas, and public hearing notices dictate that that's going to be January 23rd, because that's the only date we can make within that 45 days. So expect that that will go to them for a de novo hearing, when they will consider both your decision and the conversation that happened at planning commission, but also, you know, whatever public comments come up through that process. So I will keep you posted on that. And the general plan update, the remaining elements that you all looked at in September, will be considered by the city council at their first meeting in January, on January 9th. So we are very hopeful that that will get completed, and then we can completely focus our efforts on the comprehensive zoning update that we are already in the midst of, of course.
And I'm going to go back to planning commission requests. One of the things that we've gotten is a request from sustainability to work more closely with them as we go through the zoning, the zoning update. And I've asked, Chris, I think it would be helpful, once, once the, our consultants start writing, to have a subcommittee of us that is working with them. And the, the hearing we had earlier today, I think, really shows that we're working with issues that involve sustainability and, and issues the council wants us to put into every decision that we make, but we're, we're working with a code that doesn't really allow that. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to be more nuanced in what we can look at when we get projects in front of us that clearly have, have issues. So both, I, I think both commissions want to work in that direction, but we'll also be looking at potentially setting up a subcommittee of us to work, to work on the zoning update. And so you guys will have to think about whether you want to do that. But we're not appointing today.
One of the things that's interesting, just not to keep us here longer than we need to, but that we and sustainability are, are looking through, and I don't think CEQA has caught up on this, or any of the sort of technical studies that we might consider in some of these applications, is the conversion to electric vehicles, right? So even thinking about drive-through uses, and we'll have that discussion and analysis through the zoning code update, but what does, you know, 2035 look like if we move towards fully-electric vehicle mandate as currently envisioned by the state, or the conversion of trucks to EV traffic, as we discussed last week? And I don't know that there's sufficient data out there right now to inform that, that discussion, but you can imagine that it would have an impact on the greenhouse gas conversation, for example. So that's something that the Office of Sustainability, their director, LP, and I are discussing, as well as her commission, and they have a subcommittee looking at those types of issues that I think will inform this subcommittee and the zoning work that we're going to continue to work through. But it's, it's interesting to me to think about the shifts on that side of things and how it might influence land uses going forward.
Briefly, I just looked into that this week out of curiosity, because I do drive an electric vehicle, and within the last five years, California has decreased gas consumption by 20% due to electric vehicle purchases. So it's having a huge effect in the state.
Right. So you think about, you know, the conversations we've been having on multiple fronts and, how we analyze that or consider that, and I don't know that that process exists yet. So.
With that, I am going to again try and adjourn us until next year, Wednesday, October 8th, at five, January, oh, right, oh, my God. Oh, let's do that. January 8th of 2025. We'll have a long vacation. Oh, a bit of warning, the city council is looking at going dark, I don't know if that's happened, but they're looking at going dark in July instead of August to, to match the school calendars. I think we're the only city in the valley that goes dark in August instead of July, because school is, is back in in, in August. I don't know that it's happened, but just as you're looking at vacations, know that some change may be happening.
Yeah, I don't believe it's on the business agenda for tomorrow night's council meeting, so it may be something that they discuss in January. It, of course, impacts our calendars, because I don't intend to not have a break for any of us, so we'll have to align based on their decision.